I'd like to call the Lakeville Select Board meeting of Monday, May 20th at 5:30 at the Lakeville Police Station to order at 5:30 to 10 p.m. Welcome, everybody. If we can, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Seated, thank you. I know my cam is recording this evening. Is anybody in the audience reporting? Okay, alright. So, I'd like to just go over a few select board announcements with everybody here. It's nice to see a live audience. It's usually just us, but this is great. So, on June 10th, it's a very important day for our residents in Lakeville. It is our special and annual town meeting. The special starts at 6:30 and the annual town meeting starts at 7:00. It'll be held at the Pontefort High School in the auditorium. The select board plans to review the articles on the warrant with the finance committee on Monday, June 3rd. We'll be meeting here in this room at 5:30. It's a great opportunity if you haven't really heard us go through the warrants one by one, little explanation. We get to weigh in, ask questions, and we invite the participation of the residents as well. The warrants are posted on the town's website under the homepage news section and copies are available at the town clerk's office. Our Lakeville Fire Department will be celebrating its 75th anniversary of the department's founding that took place on June 9th, 1949, at the June 9th, 1949 town meeting. The Firefighters Association is hosting a 75th anniversary party to celebrate on June 15th from 5 to 10 p.m. at Loom Pond Lodge. The evening will be filled with fun food, music, raffles, and memories. For ticket information, you can visit the Lakeville Firefighters Association Facebook page. And this in from the treasurer, tax collector. Please note, DOXO is not affiliated with the town of Lakeville for online bill payment. All residents and taxpayers are hereby advised that the bill-paying services provided by DOXO are not endorsed by the town, nor can the town accept any responsibility for transactions conducted through DOXO. While this service does list contact information for the town of Lakeville, the town has no contract or affiliation with the company. The town does offer bill-paying services through Invoice Cloud, which is a vendor approved by the town, so just be on the lookout for that. As always, we do have some vacancies on some of our boards committees and commissions, and again, I know you're thinking about it, and we'd like to invite you to join in all the fun. So, we have Cable Advisory Committee, the Cemetery Commission, Energy Advisory, and Open Memorial Day is coming up next Monday. There's always an observance by the Historical Commission, and I believe it's going to take place at 10 a.m. on Memorial Day, and it will begin at the fire station parking lot, and then everybody will move over to different Duran Square for the ceremony. So, if you are available, please join us. And just a little fun fact, the Assawamset Pond Complex is composed of Assawamset, Pocksha, Great Quiddicus, Little Quiddicus, and Long Pond, and contains about 10,000 acres made up of oak, I don't even know how to say this, pontifer, transitional forests, lakes, ponds, and wooded swamps. It is also a significant archaeological site. Okay, that's all the announcements I have. Anybody else, any other members of the board have anything they'd like to add? Oh, it's okay. Just let you hear.
I just want to say, as far as the DOXO thing, I just go right online and right to our town website and pay it right there. So, no one really needs to seek outside, they can just pay it right there. So, you know, we've got to be careful about this stuff.
True that. Yep. For our interim town administrator report. Do you mind?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have the report in your package, just a few things. Over the last several weeks, as you know, the budget at this point is still unfortunately a working document due to things that are not under our control, but I've been working with the town accountant, Todd Hassett, on that issue, as well as ARPA projects, which will have a presentation this evening with the assistant to the town administrator. And the last thing is, last Thursday, I was honored to attend a recognition luncheon for the DPW. They received a NAPRA award, which is the National Asphalt Payment Association, for the Pickens Street, South Pickens Street, and South Kingman Street project. There were 10 awards given out in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Obviously, Lakeville was one of them, under the direction of Frank Manise and his team. So, it was great to see Frank and his team being recognized. And as you know, there's a lot of construction projects in Massachusetts funded by state and federal government, and that there are only 10 awards given out in the state, and so that's a recognition to Frank and his team, and for everyone working together on their projects. So, it was some good news.
Good job. I think Frank's won this twice. I think he won it in 2020 as well.
Yeah, he's on top of it.
That's it. So, that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions? Our boss? Just for purposes of everybody that's here, if you don't know who we are, our select board has now expanded to five members, and we have Lea Fabian, Brenna Donahue, myself, Lauren Carbone, what's her name? Maureen Candy. Brian Day, our interim town administrator, Rob Nunes, and Tracy Craig-McGee, who's our executive assistant. And next on the agenda, it's kind of very exciting, it's nice to have some guests here. So, we have some students from our Free Town Lakeville Middle School joining us for a little presentation. So, we have Jill Gagnier, I knew I was going to mess this up, Brianna Calzone, Sophie Cushing. They're all eighth grade students representing the Free Town Lakeville Middle School. These students took part in the statewide civic action project where students from across the Commonwealth had to identify, research, come up with solutions, and take action to help problems in their community. Sophie, Brianna, and Jill identified the problem of wasted land space in their town, primarily taken up by the, taken up out of use by the Lakeville Hospital, and these students would like to share their research and give the select board a middle schooler's perspective on the future use of the land. We're very happy to have you here, and I know you have a presentation for all of us. So, I'm going to turn the table over to you. Oh, okay.
Do you want me to take a five-minute recess to get back to you?
Sure. Sure. We have to see. Sure. But we're going to circle back so we can have the table for you guys. Why don't we look at the minutes on item number 10? So, in front of us, we should have select board meeting minutes of March 15th, April 18th, and May 6th. Everybody have a chance to review. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from May 6th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Over motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those signify by roll call, please.
Fabian, I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candy, I.
I.
Okay, and I'll entertain a motion for the April 18th minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam. I'm trying to find it feverishly and I can't now, but somewhere in this discussion it mentioned I had a question on if an irrigation wall was being created, and I think the question was actually if the irrigation was being used for the $15,000 capital project parks. I'm going to find it now. Probably on page two or somewhere. This is where I could check it out. But that's all I have.
Was it contextual, was it just grammatical or?
That's why I'm trying to find it. Ah, there it is. Page 2, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lines up from the bottom, right-hand side, starts with number day. Number day asked, will there be an irrigation wall in those fields? I think the question was, are they reutilizing one for that project?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Did you get that, Tracy?
Um, yeah.
Anybody else? Hearing none? Signify by roll call, please.
Fabian, I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candy, I.
I.
All right, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Over motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those signify by roll call.
Fabian, I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candy, I abstain.
I.
Madam Chair, because it was March 15th.
Oh, she doesn't have to.
Before you were.
No, no.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. Okay.
So, just one exception. How are we doing?
We should be good.
All right, are you ready? I'll just give you an extra five seconds.
Hello, my name is Brianna.
I'm Jill. And I'm Sophie. We are three eighth grade students from Free Town Lakeville Middle School. We are here to talk about the wasted space in our town.
Specifically, the Lakeville State Sanatorium, or as you know, the Lakeville Abandoned Hospital.
Our slogan is make a plan to not waste the land.
This issue matters to us as residents as this building sets the reputation for how the rest of the town looks, or how it feels to tourists and even the community as well.
We believe that the hospital could be used for a more, in a more beneficial way to the youth and the rest of the residents living in the town of Lakeville. If this hospital was remodeled, it would not only make the town more attractive to the residents and tourists, but it would also create a healthier environment for the people living and growing in the town.
If this hospital was taken care of properly, it would be able to bring out the better of the society in the hometown, as it represents who we are as well.
As you can see on our poster, it's split up into two sides. The left side represents the appearance of the hospital currently, and the right side represents the goal of the future of the hospital. In 1910, the hospital was built for tuberculosis treatment, and in 1993, it was shut down due to the cases of TB dropping. Since 1993, the hospital has become an overgrown place with diseases and will now be very hard and expensive to take care of. If you look at the bottom left side of the poster, you will notice that there is images that were what is known as the problem. If you look, the first picture you'll see is the inside of the aging hospital, the next two photos are the overviews of the hospital, and how the space is used, which is right here. This space is 49 acres but has around 10 acres of land that is unusable. This hospital does contain cancerous diseases and some water and sewer damage. We know this project will be expensive to remodel, but you can see that the hospital isn't in good shape and will continue to rot if you don't do anything about it soon.
In this area of the poster, you will see a few images that back up the idea of the groups that would oppose our solution. The first picture shown is a logo of the company that is currently proposing a plan for the hospital, which is Rhino Capital. Throughout the days of work and the project, we have collected data that shows how Rhino Capital is proposing a plan for 55 years plus a family living area that contains cottages for elderly and mutual housing. This is a model for their plan down here that has all the different parts that they want to include. Rhino Capital has presented a plan in 2021 stating to have a warehouse building. This proposal wasn't passed by the town, it wasn't approved. We emailed the Rhino Capital Company a few weeks ago. On Thursday, May 16th, they emailed us back. This email contained new information that included trails and two dog parks added to the 55-plus living. This was new news to us. While considering Rhino Capital's history, they seem to have changed and/or added to their plan. We have stayed consistent with our plan from the beginning because we are confident that this is what the town needs.
By looking to the top right of our poster, you will see a few images that back up the idea of the groups that would support our plan. The first image is an email that we sent to the SRPEDD. The SRPEDD is a company that specializes in action plans for our towns and areas inside them. We thought it was a good idea to reach out to them and ask a few specific questions to our topic. This led to an image, an interview that gave us a majority of the information and research we have collected for our project. Later in the project, they gave us a very useful map that we are using for this presentation. The next image in our, is an email we sent to a member of the select board. By surprise, we were invited to talk about our issue and why it is important to our community. This has given us an opportunity to present our proposal to attempt to make a change in the goal of the future of the property. The town, the two graphs below show the data of the youth. The first graph is a pie chart, which is a survey that we gave to our class, and it shows that the highest percentage is based off of what they want to see more of in our town, and it's for recreational activities. The next one is a bar graph that shows the percentages of different age groups in Lakeville, and it shows that there's a higher percent of youth added together than there is of elderly, and this provides the conclusion that the town would benefit more. The first image in, it's not coming. The first image in the bottom right of the poster is mini golf. This is part of our solution because we want to include recreational activities for the youth as part of many activities that follow. Based on the class survey, the main want is recreational activities. This is a way to give the youth a say in the proposal.
Now, let's watch our video. Yeah.
To summarize, so they basically interviewed some of their classmates?
And they said that they would want to see the sports complex and food in the sports complex, basically agreeing with our proposal.
The next image is the people eating at a restaurant. This supports the solution to our project because we like to include food outlets in the sports complex. This would create a way to make money and would attract tourists as well. Food outlets aren't exactly popular in this town and should be showcased as it could bring people together as well. This is a way to include more fast food and sit-down restaurants in our town of Lakeville.
The last photograph of our solution is a logo of a similar complex to our proposal. This complex includes sport-related environments, recreational activities, and food outlets. People in our town are getting more involved in sports activities, and our solution is a way for the youth to grow. Youth is, the youth is the future, and we should provide opportunities to guide them in the right direction. People are always talking about their children and too many teens being attracted to their electronic devices. This is a way for kids to get out of the house and get involved in activities that don't revolve around notifications and screens.
Currently, we have not fundraised or shown any awareness, but we are hopeful to do so in the future. Fundraisers could consist of selling raffle tickets, having charity fundraisers, charity golf tournaments, and more, where donations could be accepted. For awareness, we could create social media platforms, create signs for the town and for local schools, and we could hold events to spread awareness. Here in the poster, there's an example of a flyer that we could create to hold and show around. We have reached out to many companies and college professors to get information on urban planning, the Lakeville State Sanatorium, and wasted space overall. The cracked image in the middle of our poster, which is labeled action plan, is to show that it's on the hospital side and the grand opening side, to show that we want to transform the overgrown hospital into a new, something that is more beneficial for our town. And we're hoping that this will transform into a well-running place like this.
By looking at the image on the bottom left, we have, we hope to eventually help this problem and make it into something better. We have helped this issue by recognizing and reaching out to the town select board about it. Knowing that this is a step in the right direction, we are going to present our new proposal and idea and hope to get some opinions and ideas on this topic. We have come here today to explain to the residents of Lakeville, Massachusetts, we believe that this proposal for remodeling of this property will be beneficial for the future of the town. This will be able to help the youth by giving them somewhere to be children without getting into trouble and providing them with jobs, also being able to bring their families together. This, with this new proposal, the community of Lakeville will be seen in a way that no other small town has been seen, in a way that will change the way for the youth.
So, when we presented for our class our issue, we made it interactive to make the project more fun. So, on the outside of this box, it represents the hospital as there's overgrown moss everywhere, and now the door is cracked. When you open the front of the door, it opens to a mini golf course. So, in the mini golf course, there's two obstacles. One is Rhino Capital, as we have to get past their plan to make ours, and the select board meeting to show all of our opinions. So, the goal is to get past the obstacles to get to our new plan, which is our flags. Before we go into the map, I would like, I would also like to add that the Starland Sports Complex and Fun Park also makes a revenue of $5.1 million per year, which would also help the town make money. This map is an overview of Lakeville currently, those made by the S-P-R-E-D-D. Okay. So, this is the back nine, and it shows that it supplies food for this section of Lakeville, but our proposal will provide food for this section of Lakeville. This is Ted Williams Camp, and it shows how this is the only place in Lakeville that provides sports. And then this is the Free Town Schools, and how that it would be beneficial to the students to have the sports complex to use over the weekends. Over here is Valdez Craft Pizzeria, which also shows how distant it is from the hospital and that it could use more food in that area of the town. Then over here is Cleo Carr Dance Studio, which shows how sports like that can rent places in our new complex so people don't have to drive as far. And then this is just where the Lakeville State Sanatorium is in relative position to the other places.
Another public place in Lakeville is the Lakeville Public Library, which is an option for kids, but it's not what we want as much as we need. I mean, I have to say that. And then there's Assawamset Elementary School, which is also showing that a point for the youth, they can be able to, kids like that go to that school can use this sports complex. And Elliott Farm is the only place for teens like us to get jobs, and there's not a lot of jobs there, and our complex would supply jobs to teens like this.
After everything that we've presented to you today, do you have any questions? We just have one for you. Are you looking to generate money for this town or help a certain population? In other words, what is your main goal for this topic?
Well, first. I guess my first question to you ladies, you already started your future and training and secured your schooling and, you know, getting jobs at Serpide. Wow, impressive. Very impressive. Well thought out.
Could I, could I just?
Yes, please.
I loved the slogan, but I honestly, could you say it again? I didn't get to write it down.
Make a plan to not waste the land.
Make a plan.
To not waste the land.
To not waste the land. I love it.
Excellent. Well, I can speak for myself. Yeah, we're always looking for ways to generate revenue for the town to offset our budget. So, now, how long have you been working on this?
A few weeks.
I mean, I heard you say something, but.
A few weeks.
Just a few weeks, you put all this together? Contacted the, all the people too?
Yeah, it's pretty good. Yeah. It's a lot of work. It is.
I think it's fantastic. I think it's great that you guys took that initiative and you reached out to a lot of different boards and agencies that other people wouldn't have. In terms of the hospital itself, I'll be perfectly honest with you, I don't know. That's because, you know, they own it and they already have the plan, but I think it's great, and I think that it's important for you to stay involved locally because you're right, you touched on a lot of issues that Lakeville has and that we could fix. So, I'm glad that the youth want to be outside, you guys want to be doing more things, you want to expand recreational opportunities in Lakeville and make them money-making. So, don't stop being involved. I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Watching this presentation really shows how involved you were in your thought process, and you were thinking some really higher-level thoughts on how to get where you needed to go and who you needed to ask to get there. So, bravo for all you put forward and all your visuals, which are really great, and it helps tell the story that you're trying to tell, and, you know, I'm impressed, and I would love for you guys to reach out to us anytime you have ideas, anytime you have something. You guys are citizens just like everyone else. Reach out and talk to your select board, talk to your planning board, tell them things that you want to see, because it's important to be involved your whole life long. So, this is a great start. So, thank you.
First of all, are there any family members or such in the audience for these young ladies? I mean, you must be incredibly proud. Job well done to you as well, all very well spoken. It was really nice to see the different layers that they went into here. I mean, you touched on everything really that we would want to consider. I mean, I think it's also really important, like, we've got members of the Master Plan Implementation Committee there in the audience, and this is a whole area of our population that sadly probably gets overlooked, to be quite honest with you, when it comes to these kinds of things, and many schools have, you know, student government, and maybe there's an opportunity for us to interact with some of them, to get some of this feedback. I mean, I can remember going to Starland, believe it or not, Lakeville used to have a mini golf course on Route 44. Now, it looks like the moss on the side of your carboard there. So, yeah, I mean, really, really well done, love a lot of the ideas, and, you know, even if it wasn't the hospital, there are other opportunities that come up with land, and this is just yet another thing that the town can think about and say, wait a minute, like, we heard a whole other viewpoint.
Agreed.
You know, we should consider these things, because in 10, 15 years, it might be the three of you sitting at this table, and somebody else asking you, like, where's my mini golf course? So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So, where now from here? You came here, does the project end here? Are you still working with Rhino to see if that they can accommodate some of what you're looking for, or?
Next week, we're going to the Bridgewater High School to present, what? Bridgewater State. Oh. To present this to more people to see if they have any opinions on it.
Great, fantastic.
Well, I mean, I would like to say that Rhino, who owns the property, has, you know, been, has listened to a lot of the suggestions from the town, so even if it's not the same exact thing, they definitely may take, you know, your opinion under consideration when they're thinking about what to provide, you know, the residents there on the property, even if it isn't for a, you know, like, I think you said that they were going to have trails and two dog parks, maybe they'll, you know, take it into consideration. I wouldn't stop. I would, you may have classmates from there, and you could be helping them out by getting them some nice recreational stuff to do in that area if that's where their families choose to live. So, yeah, I wouldn't stop, I would keep going.
Madam Chair, in fact, Rhino is in the process of scheduling a community meeting, most likely June 5th from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Loom Pond Lodge, so feel free to attend. We haven't finalized it yet, but hopefully tomorrow that'll be finalized, and you'll be welcome, be open to the public.
Excellent. If everybody can entertain me for just a minute, I would love to get a picture with you ladies and your project if we can all maybe stand over that way. I know we have our masket reporter here with us. And then you can actually, you know, prove that you actually were here.
Absolutely.
Where are we looking first? Where are we looking first?
All the moms.
Anna, you ready?
Smile for the newspaper. Ready, set, nice job. Okay. Great job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for inviting us.
Our next meeting is June third, so.
We'll save a seat. Three seats.
Hey, um. Everybody, you're welcome to, to stay. Um, if you'd like, so.
On to six.
Alright, so um, moving on, we are meeting with the Parks Commission um for joint appointment. Is Brittany here? Oh, there she is.
Why never listen to the chairman? Why never listen to the chairman?
Oh, never listen to the chairman.
Boy, they jumped in quick.
Where's Brittany?
Right here.
My Brittany's gone.
Okay, um, so we're meeting with the Parks Commission as um there's a vacated um position. Uh, they received a letter of interest from Brittany Lapore, um, which is attached in your packet here. The Parks Commission had met with Brittany uh and voted to make a recommendation to the select board um that she be appointed. The Parks Commission is an elected board, so this would require a joint um appointment from the select board as well as the Parks Commission. Have you called your meeting to order, Mr. Chairman?
We do that right now.
Okay.
Is there anyone here recording the meeting besides Lake Kim? Good question. If someone said yes, do we say anything? I think we, we asked it for a million times. So I was just curious if I kick him out or something. So tonight, we're meeting with the select board to discuss and possible vote on Brittany Lapore for the vacant seat on the Park Commission. To the select board, we have interviewed Brittany. She has come to a couple of meetings, uh expressed her interest. Uh, we think she would be very, very valuable to the park. She has some wonderful ideas and great energy. Uh, we hope that if you do. We, we hope that if you do um. Uh, approve the appointment, that she will be working with uh Parks Commissioner Holmes on the new skate park project. So we're very excited about that. Um, so we are, anyone wanna make a motion?
Do, does she wanna give history?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do discussion. If you'd like to tell us a little bit about yourself.
Um, my name's Brittany Lapore. I'm currently a student at B C C for the um executive administrative office assistant job, hard Tracy over there. Um, and I'm just, you know, looking to get my feet wet, participate in the community, get out there.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Did you submit your name or?
Correct, yes. I have been keeping an eye on the website and I saw that and then I realized select board is like, wait, the top and I needed to be down here somewhere. So um Tracy was nice enough to let me know of the other openings that were um open. And uh Parks Commission seemed like a good fit for me. She said finance and I was like, I don't know.
That's great, great.
Cable committee would have been easier. So we already, we already voted at a meeting. Do you need us to take another vote or?
No, no, no.
We have to do a joint, so somebody will make, make a motion, we'll get a second and then.
Like to make a motion to um. Vote on Brittany as our fifth member.
Okay, with the term to expire April sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? I'm very excited that you decided to continue your, your quest to participate. It's wonderful. Anything else?
Nope. I'm glad she stuck around as well.
As are we.
Alright, so um I'd like to do a roll call uh by, vote by roll call, please.
Fabian, I.
Toni, you, I.
Carboni, I.
Candido, I.
Day, I.
Smith, I, I'm sorry.
Paul, I.
Holmes, I.
Excellent, the I's have it. Welcome to the Parks Commission.
Can you start at the town clerk's office and get sworn in tomorrow?
Okay.
Yes, good point.
Yes.
Very good point.
At any time or?
Yes, just go in there. You get paperwork to do social media and things like that.
And that test.
Does the parks have any other business to conduct this evening?
No.
I have something, that's okay. Um, as part of our goal setting, we were talking about updating the descriptions of the various boards and committees. So if you have any changes to the Parks Commission description or um, you know, information about it, could you please send that to probably Madam Chair? Um, or myself and we'll just compile it all together.
Is there something else we have in place?
I'm not sure. We're just kind of updating the website.
So you just want us to really start from?
Right, so basically take a look and see if anything needs to be adjusted.
And you are officially a liaison?
Not yet. We haven't revisited that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we adjourn our meeting? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I make a motion, will you adjourn the meeting?
All in favor?
I.
I. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You as well. Good luck.
Okay, uh, we have an appointment um with our police chief. Uh, we received two letters, um. A recommendation from our police chief requesting the appointment of Eric Swenson and Elton Ashley as special police officers. These terms um would expire on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four typically. Uh, but it would be up to the board if we would like the term and the, the motion to expire on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Chief, thank you for joining us this evening.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so the request I have before you is for two special police officers. They're not full-time police officers. What, what they are is they're specials, which allows them to work uh details uh for the town of Lakeville. If you're not aware, it's difficult to fill all the requests that we have from the various companies that work road jobs in Lakeville. And uh we don't have the manpower to do it. We often go out of town to, to fill those details. Uh, this, appointing these two um as special police officers in Lakeville will allow me to keep a list where I can uh fill those details. The two names that I have before you is Eric Swenson. He's a retired uh Massachusetts State Trooper, retired at the rank of captain. He lives in Lakeville. Um, and uh Elton Ashley, uh retired at the rank of sergeant from the Free Town Police Department and he worked there for uh twenty-seven years. So those are the two names that I have before you.
Okay, um, entertain our, our motion.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Elton Ashley and Eric Swenson. As special police officers from town of Lakeville uh with their terms to expire. Uh, did we wanna talk about the twenty-four, twenty-five before I finish the motion?
I don't mind going to twenty-five.
I'm fine as well.
That works better for you, Chief.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be on the list anyway and uh that, that you'll have before you in, in July.
I will make the motion to expire on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? There are none? Uh, vote by roll, please.
Fabian, I.
Toni, you, I.
Carboni, I.
Candido, I.
Day, I.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Eric and Elton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, at this time, I would like to invite the finance committee. Um, now I know you, you weren't gonna be in session tonight. You were just joining us just for purposes of discussion. No votes or are you?
We have a call, so we will.
Are you posted? Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent.
Yep.
Okay. Have you um called your, have you called to where?
Not yet, because we have a member who's in the.
I've got you, okay. Alright, well, thank you for joining us tonight and as soon as you have your full um compliment for the evening, um you can call that to order. Um, so there's a couple of things that um, you know, we can do together and I'm glad that Todd, our town house at our town accountant is here to. Help facilitate and answer any of our questions.
Okay, I'll, I'll call the meeting to order. The uh Monday, May twentieth, I don't know, finance committee meeting. Uh, attendance, we have a go from Zedamils, until Eric Costant, my son, Kev, to LaPonka, and to my right is Mondo, Mike Wright.
Nice to see you all this evening. Alright, so the first thing um that we have in front of us um this evening is. The, am I confused? Yeah. Alright, so we'll get, we'll do the transfers. So anything, anytime that there's a, um, a need to make a transfer. The finance committee along with the select board actually makes the um, you know, the vote. So in front of us, um we do have some transfers that we need to address. Um, Todd, would you like to go over these with us?
Sure. So this evening, we have six departmental transfer requests, which do require approval or vote of both the select board and the finance committee. The finance committee has their own reserve fund as well, which does not necessarily involve the select board. Uh, but uh there are no requests at this time to access those funds. Um, there's a balance of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand in the reserve fund. Uh, we have used eleven thousand earlier in the year for the um town administrator search services and expenses. So that's been the only draw from the reserve fund. The departmental transfers cannot take place um under statute until after May first. So um, that's why, a couple of these we've known about for a while, but we didn't have the ability to execute or ask you to consider these transfers. So we have six before you this evening. Um, I can just go through them quickly and then. Uh, the first one is uh twenty-seven thousand five hundred for legal services. Uh, to uh, we're, the projected shortfall is, is the result of a number of um. Items that the, both the planning board and the board of appeals are involved with uh right now. And we'd be suggesting that the twenty-seven five come ten thousand from conservation salaries. Ten thousand from planning salaries and seventy-five hundred from the cable TV advisory. Budget, which was specifically for legal services, for which they did not need any this year. The second request is um for, and we've done this uh I think a couple of times. Where we've had savings uh in the custodial area and we've had facility projects. So it's an opportunity, the request from the facilities department is to, uh they're looking to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from their salary account. To their expenses account. They have had a number of um unanticipated costs this year. Um, around the historic townhouse barn, the war memorial and the new pavilion site. And also, as, as you know, the, the recommended budget for facilities expenses for next year uh was reduced by some twenty-two thousand dollars. So this is an opportunity um to take care of a couple of more facility projects um before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the third request is um, and we've had this before to um, to supplement the animal control. Um, department's callback needs. This is mainly for weekend and night callbacks. Um, and vacation and sick coverage. And the request is ten thousand dollars. Uh, to be transferred from the part-time inspectors, the electrical inspector line. As you know, our, our construction activity in town has declined, so there are savings in the part-time inspector area this year. Uh, the fourth request is um to supplement the transportation costs for the agricultural high school. This is specifically. Uh, the, the amount is eighteen thousand. Um, and it's uh specifically for the student we're transporting to Norfolk um agr- county agricultural school in Walpole, Massachusetts. Uh, when these transportation services were, uh the bids were awarded, it was August, which was after this, the budget was in place. We do have savings uh from the old colony vote tech. Uh, they, their school committee in the fall voted to reduce our assessment, so we have savings. This is an education to education proposed transfer. The fifth request is um to supplement the snow and ice control expenses from snow and ice unused wages. Uh, and this has to do with um the need for the number of icing related um matters we had over the winter. So it's to cover salt and sand expenses, but there were savings on the wage side, so. Net-net, we don't have a snow deficit this year, but because town meeting votes two lines, a s- a salary and a expense line. This transfer is necessary to make the budget, um correct the budget, if you will. And the last um transfer um we're recommending is to the general insurance uh budget for six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And this is for two items. It's for one thousand, one fifty for uh workers' compensation, which also includes. Uniformed uh police and fire personnel. Um, so those premiums came in eleven hundred over budget. And also we had a premium that came in later in the fall for our pollution coverage. So this is, affects our general property and liability insurance line, five thousand, five hundred. Uh, a- as well as changes to our vehicle inventory that occurred during the year, to our auto policy. So those are the six transfers we have at this time.
Thank you for the explanation.
Sure.
Do we um, do we vote them one by one? Is that the way we should for the record?
I don't know, we've done it. We've always done it.
Yeah.
Unless there was one, we're gonna.
We'll, we'll go one by one. Uh, before I call, start calling the uh, the motions, um, any questions from the finance committee? It seems pretty straightforward.
Well, I think we'll, we'll have a little quick discussion. I don't care how many want to go to the call.
Okay.
Chair, is this, is this a joint vote or two individual votes?
In many communities, it's, it's separate. There's two different, it doesn't have to happen at the same meeting, in other words. Unlike the, the appointment you did earlier tonight, that has to be joint.
I just didn't know if we're doing motion, motion.
But, but we've, we've historically tried to work these as joint, so.
So I'll call it and then we all.
Well, you do your part and then.
Oh, got it. And then you guys will do it.
I think the reason I'm asking is like if there's discussion or will you entertain, if you're going first, will you entertain discussion from us if we want to?
Yes, that would make sense.
That would be great.
Okay, okay. Alright, so I'll start with the first one. I'll entertain a motion to transfer. Some of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the conservation salaries, uh agent, planning, uh the town planner salary. Cable TV advisory, legal services, transfer that to uh legal services.
I'll, so.
Second.
Okay, any, okay, now we'll open up for discussions. Any questions?
I, you briefly touched on what the twenty-seven thousand was. What's, what, legal services for Z B A and planning or?
Yeah, there's a number of matters um that they're involved with that require.
Yes.
Council services.
Yeah, so we, uh town council services are provided by K P Law. So they are assisting the zoning board, the planning board. As you know, there are some uh significant cases uh that the town is involved in. That K P Law is representing and also day-to-day questions that uh various offices within town government may reach out to K P Law.
Some of the freshmen, what do we budget for?
Seventy-five thousand.
So we were originally seventy-five, so we're twenty-seven five off and seventy-five thousand. So close to a hundred, okay. Okay, that's my question.
Good question. I have one, just one question. Um, what does that leave us with for the planner salary overage for the year?
That would leave just over $28,000.
Thank you.
Good, okay, roll call.
Beels, aye.
Costin, aye.
Lock, aye.
Right, aye.
I'll entertain the same motion for the Select Board.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion already take place, roll call please.
Fabian, aye.
I'm sorry, I had a question. I didn't, I thought that they were doing theirs and then we were doing ours. That's why I didn't speak up earlier, I apologize. Is that okay?
It's fine.
Okay. So where these are over, is this going to be something that's over next year as well? Or is this just for this year?
Good question. Legal, it's a good, it's a strong possibility that the $75,000 that we appropriate will not be enough, because as we have some big cases going forward. So, you know, next spring, Todd and the next Town Administrator may be back for an additional appropriation for Legal Services.
And then you also said that certain offices would reach out to KP Law with questions. Is that something that happens on a daily basis?
I hope not. I reached out to them this afternoon, but it's not on a daily basis, no.
But every time we reach out, it's an hourly bill?
Oh, yes, absolutely. If it's fifteen minutes or half hours, it's...
KP usually is very good about giving us a journal of who reached out, how much time they spent on it, so that the TA's office has an understanding of how things are running.
Every month, they send the invoice and it's itemized by department.
Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, Donahue, aye.
Oh, Carbone, aye. Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to the second transfer. I'll entertain a motion to transfer the sum of $15,000 from Facilities salaries, custodians, to Facilities expenses for building maintenance.
So move. Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Any Select Board members with discussion?
I did have one minor thing. I assume the unexpected cost for the barn and the pavilion were due to finding the town water lines right where we hoped they wouldn't be.
Correct.
But how do we have unanticipated rehab on the War Memorial?
I don't know the answer to that.
I'm glad it looks as good as it does now.
Yeah, I want to say that was around $7,600, but that's just it.
Okay.
From memory.
Thank you.
But I'm not sure the detail of the work.
The new Pavilion Site, where is that? Not familiar with that.
Which one's the...
The new Pavilion Site.
But they're moving the stage, you know how the stage was right behind that little...
Oh, right.
Yeah, they're moving it closer to where the cemetery is. And then the pavilion's gonna go over that.
So they're moving right to where the water line was?
No, away from where the water line was.
They tried to build it over the existing stage, went down and found like the 16-inch water line.
Oh.
So...
It's always unexplained, right?
Yeah.
In the future, if that could be explained a little more in depth, because we've got three things here and we just had to go through what it is and we don't know what the War Memorial is. So just for records, if that could be a little more in depth.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Beels, aye.
Costin, aye.
Lock, aye.
Right, aye.
All right, I'll entertain the same motion for the Select Board.
So move.
Second.
No discussion? Roll call please.
Fabian, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye. Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay, moving on to the third transfer. Intain a motion to transfer the sum of $10,000 from part-time Electrical Inspector wages to Animal Control for salaries to cover callback.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, questions, thank you.
I guess same question as prior, taking money out of the Electrical Inspector, do we have any money left in the budget if we need Electrical inspections?
Absolutely.
So I was thinking about pulling a permit, so.
No, there's plenty of money.
Then you'd be putting more money in.
If there's enough, I won't pull it.
Twenty, the part-time inspectors, we've got over $30,000 still with two months to pay.
Okay.
And the budget's like $78,000 for the year.
Okay.
So yeah, it's well within.
Madam Chair, is that gonna be enough for the end of the year for the animal?
Maybe not. We've both, Tracy and I both did independent projections, if you will. And we were within a few hundred dollars of each other, so we rounded up to my number, which was slightly higher. But I'm not sure it's really gonna depend on leave, you know, if we had...
Yeah.
Or what happens between now and 6:30. But we will have one more joint meeting in July for any last-minute needs. But we think, based on what we know, this should cover. But this is the only one on your list that...
Yeah, my next question is...
It's pretty close.
Yeah, did we budget appropriately for next year?
Probably not. Probably not. We did a transfer for this last year at this time as well. Similar, maybe a little more, more than this.
I might have my years mixed up, but was it this fiscal year or that the ACO was out for a while on leave?
Last year, FY '23, yep. We did do a, this is the second year we've done it.
So this is a normal operation year then, basically? Like he wasn't out unexpectedly?
Not, I think that was the year before where he was out for a period of time.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, then this one's a little surprising.
And then we weren't able to, sorry, Madam Chair, we weren't able to make it up with all part-time people to cover for that?
Well, it would be the...
They're not budgeted.
It would be the ACO being out that we're then paying this.
Correct.
So ACO's out.
And it's weekend coverage and nights, yep, yep. So we budgeted $30,000 for this callback.
I know that we were short in 2019, 2020.
We've been short a couple of times, right, yep, absolutely. Yep.
Something to keep in mind for September.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it, is it a budget issue, is it an operational issue? What, I mean, there's probably multiple questions.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to take a look at that.
One full time and then some part-time, that's kind of hard for the course.
We have to definitely take a look at the whole.
Yep.
Yeah, we leave a lot more activity, you know, causing the callbacks too.
Right.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Beels, aye.
Costin, aye.
Lock, aye.
Right, aye.
Same motion for the Select Board?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Bible.
Fabian, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye. Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay, moving on to the fourth, fourth transfer request. Intain a motion to transfer the sum of $18,000 from Old Colony Vocational Technical Assessment to the Agricultural High School Transportation Line Item. So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions?
Transportation is expensive. Does observation count?
Yeah, it's really expensive, because I saw what we budgeted. The fact we missed that mark just is staggering to me. So we budgeted, if I'm not mistaken, $100,000 for that, correct?
Seventy.
No. We budgeted $50,000 for this student. We have another transportation budget within Aggie for Bristol Aggie.
Yeah, I just thought it was higher than that for some reason. I remember we had a conversation about it. Is it in this budget?
For this kind of budget.
Okay, so fifty, so you say, wait, fifty?
The bids, the bids happened in August, when they knew how many... The bids happened in August, that was sent for the low bid.
Yeah.
The budget was put in place last May.
Yeah. So we needed another...
Yeah, $18,000.
$18,000, so it's $68,000 to transport one child.
Yes, sir.
Two and five.
Yep, Walpole.
Truly in the wrong business. I have a car. I should have been in a bid. Is it, is it a school, is it a private car service? Is it a school department transportation?
It's a private transportation service that does pupil transportation.
And they have to be Cory-checked and all that stuff.
It's not Uber, is it?
No, I checked and that would be, that would be $25,000 a year. I just checked in case, in case we could.
Could you explain what the Old Tech, Old Colony Voc Tech assessment is? I just don't know what that is, so where the money's coming from.
I'll let Phil defer to that.
So we have a number of Lakeville students that attend Vocational High School, Old Colony. And we, we get an annual assessment for the operating costs to support those students. And the state aid was finalized after Town Meeting for all of the member towns. And the state aid came in higher to support education. So the school committee, Old Colony, the Voc Tech School Committee voted to reduce the assessment for the member towns.
Very good, thank you.
So, yeah.
Madam Chair, I was just gonna ask through you, did the new calls that came in look like they give us any relief or were they better or worse?
Yeah, so we've, we've, the bidding was typically done by Freetown Lakeville Regional Schools. We took it over this year and we did it, we're in the process of doing it. It looks like the budget we have proposed more than covers and we may have a reduction on the Norfolk student here for next year.
Yes.
Significant, I saw that.
Yeah.
Oh, you seen it, okay.
Thank you for doing that.
It's my pleasure.
Yep. I was gonna bring up what Member Dave brought up about the Norfolk bids.
You can't sit together anymore.
Oh, yeah, it's 60, I'm sorry.
Is the conversation done?
Beels, aye.
Costin, aye.
Lock, aye.
Right, aye.
I'll entertain the same motion for the Select Board.
So moved. Second.
Little more discussion?
Fabian, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye. Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay, I'll move on to the fourth transfer. Intain a motion to transfer the sum of $10,000 from Snow and Ice wages to Snow and Ice, Sand and Salt Line Item.
So, clarification's the fifth one.
Sorry, for the record.
Second.
Okay, comments and questions?
Just one, are we pre-buying?
No.
Okay, I was all excited for a minute.
Yeah, no, there's, there's, after this, I'll do it be $4,000 unexpended from the original appropriation. So I guess we could buy a little bit, but yeah.
A bag.
I'm just happy the numbers are this low.
Yeah.
Stop jinxing it.
It'll probably come this week.
I'll go buy a snow blower so we don't get one.
Okay, roll call.
Beels, aye.
Costin, aye.
Lock, aye.
Right, aye.
I'll entertain the same motion for the Select Board.
So moved. Second.
Motion is a second, any further discussion? None, roll please.
Fabian, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye. Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay, moving on to the sixth and final transfer request. Intain a motion to transfer the sum of $6,650 from the Group Insurance, Health Insurance Rebates and Wellness Programs, transfer to Workers' Compensation and Property and Liability Insurance Line Items. So move.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Can Todd or Bob or Nacho, can you repeat the uniform part? Was that in this part or was that the last part?
Yeah, I think I mentioned on the line that we call in the budget, Workers' Compensation also covers 111F injuries for uniformed police and fire personnel. So there are two policies paid within that budget line.
The property liability insurance increase was for...
That was for pollution coverage and changes to our fleet inventory. We, for example, we now have a new ladder truck that's added to the insurance policy. And new police cruisers every year swapped out. So we usually get a spring adjustment invoice from the insurance carrier.
Are we trading our vehicles or are we repurposing just for my own? Because it increases the number in the fleet that's organized.
You're right, yeah, it's a combination, depending, yeah.
Traded in the old ladder truck.
Well, that, yeah, we can't repurpose that, but a cruiser will become a dog officer vehicle.
That's true.
Or a Town Administrator vehicle.
We cannot repurpose those vehicles due to the Green Communities law. So you can't repurpose police and fire to other...
I thought I seen they're all hybrids.
No.
They're not, take that. If what Ford has stopped making a hybrid interceptor, because they're not practical, so. But so you can't repurpose them because they have to be... So our fleet should be about the same. So the increase was premium because of pollution controls, you're saying?
Yeah, pollution coverage, yes.
Okay.
Any more discussion from the Select Board?
Okay, roll call.
Beels, aye.
Costin, aye.
Lock, aye.
Right, aye.
I'll entertain the same motion for the Select Board?
So moved. Second.
Vote by roll please.
Fabian, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye. Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Excellent, okay, thank you very much.
So Tracy has the original form and the chair of each, both chairs will need to sign those.
I think my DVD here. Chris, everyone here?
Oh, Chris has them, okay.
Excellent.
Okay. I'm ready for the next, we're gonna be discussing our FY '25 operating budget as well as capital budget. I'd like to turn this over to our Town Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all, as you all know, there have been some new developments over the last week at the Regional School District regarding the fiscal year '25 budget. Chairman Plonker has been heavily involved. Again, thank you for your involvement. I don't know if you want to kind of give an update, because that will impact, obviously, the budget.
Can I just jump ahead here for, honestly? Chris has done so much work here, okay? He really is to be commended. And, you know, in the, in the past years, there's been animosity, there always is. It's tradition and, you know, I don't know if it's a good tradition or not, but between, you know, school committees and whether it's their mayor or whatever. But in the last few years, we've really, really tried to be, come to the table in an amicable way. And this year, you know, we had noticed a few things. And for the first time ever, really, I think, as far as I can remember, the two chairs from the FinComs took the lead instead of it becoming like the selectmen versus the school committee, whatever. They've done a phenomenal job, honestly, Chris. I really do thank you for all the work that you've put in, for the work that, you know, learning everything, I think you've just done a fantastic job. And it's eye-opening, really. And it's because of you guys that we know about. I'm convinced it's because of your diligence, yours and, you know, Margaret French from the Freetown Finance Committee, that we know about this error. So kudos to you and much, much appreciation, because it's problematic. It's very problematic right now, so.
Agreed, and thank you, thank you for your, your support and kind words, thank you. Again, I do want to, for the record, state that it's been, Margaret French from the Freetown Finance Committee Care has also been instrumental in the amount of work that we've done, issues we've uncovered. But talking about the assessment. So I think everybody is aware that, based off of the budgets that were voted by the House and the Senate pending governor's approval, has resulted in initial Chapter 70 funding for the school district. We did receive that updated assessment from the Finance Director. However, we believe a school committee, a school committee, for the record, was not informed of that action. We believe that a school committee vote is required before they hand that assessment to us.
It's part of the regional agreement. It's part of the regional agreement.
Okay, right. Um, so based off of that, a school committee vote, a, a school committee meeting was scheduled for Wednesday, has been canceled. I just got the official word today from the uh School Committee Chair. Uh, canceled due to a lack of quorum. So can't make any, I believe we, we'd be premature to make any decisions tonight or reviews uh until we know the outcome of when, and now we have to wait for that next school committee meeting. I don't, don't know when that's, hasn't been scheduled yet. So that's all I want to say on that right now.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes.
And also, um, the superintendent reached out to me, I think on Friday, easily Thursday, or sometime Friday. I did reach out to him today, so we can play in phone tag, so. Um, as soon as I, as soon as I connect with him, I'll let the president, Chairman Plonker know.
I'd actually like to hear from Mr. Lacamera, um, who has been at the past couple of school committee meetings and I think that this is a big deal. I think that we should, I don't know if this is an option for us, but I think that we should try to get the school committee to have a meeting and break their two weeks. Because otherwise, they won't be meeting again until after um after the town meeting. So I think that that's something that we need to happen because when they took this vote to, on the ceiling of the budget, it was the night of the election. So I don't wanna do that again where we go forward without the meeting and we just show up at town hall and do it without knowing any of this other information. So.
Well, the chair.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna, um, I'm just surprised they can't get a quorum. I mean, it's an eight-member board and we've been doing hybrid meetings all the time now. But they can't find five people that can join a person or a hybrid.
So I know someone asked for a Zoom link and it wasn't provided.
That's unfortunate. Um, we did, or I did, make a recommendation that that vote on election night be held, not, not held and execute, but hold it because it was like, this just, I didn't, I felt the optics looked bad. You're gonna vote for that on the election night, but they went forward and unfortunately, we hoped all, everything would work out, but here we are. Um, I mean, Chris came to me months ago and said, some things just don't feel right. So like, like Leah said, I really do thank you and everybody else that was involved. I'm glad somebody with an auditing background took a look at it and knew how to uncover things. And, you know, that was, this is unfortunate.
I believe everyone is aware the accounting discrepancies that we uncovered with the budget was confirmed mostly accurate. There is still one item that they're disputing. And the.
Madam Chair, it was IT services or?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. It's still, it's just under eight hundred K. Um, the budget is off. Uh, and that, that's, again, that's the work that my, I, myself and Margaret, um, in Freetown. We were just going through, we were not doing a, and we're not auditors, by the way. We were just going through and simply adding up line items by hand, cause we don't have the source files and we found those errors. So their response, we received their response. Uh, they're gonna cover that short flood, school choice. Uh, and it's going to leave, it's gonna deplete their, I, I call it lack of better term, reserve funds. We know they have, I know Mr. Lacamera pointed that out at a school committee meeting. He asked the question, how much they have in school choice, uh, E and D and um circuit breaker. And it's two point six, two point seven million, I believe was their number. They have in those three accounts total.
One forty-nine in uh E and D, nine hundred thousand in school choice, seven hundred thousand in circuit breaker.
Right, so.
Usually they don't get over a million in E and D.
Right, so they're gonna deplete that amount, um, again, without making any cuts to the budget.
So, Madam Chair, from my understanding, I know you've spent time in the school committee, does this essentially set us up for next year's budget being?
Yes.
What, the increase they want anyways, plus everything else now.
So this is an eight hundred thousand dollar, oops.
Yeah, shuffle.
Um, for FY twenty-four?
No, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, oh, for twenty-five. I thought you were working in the current.
We, we, yeah, we were back in January, February, asking questions about the twenty-four budget. We noticed some issues with that. Now we've recently moved on to the FY twenty-five budget.
Okay. So Madam Chair. Yeah, that definitely sets us up. Um, they're already in the hole. So, right, they're already in the hole. And let's remind everyone at home, okay? That the schools typically get the entire new levy every year. That's all we have to give, okay? The town gets its extra money from permitting and local receipts and, you know, new growth or whatever it is. But the schools typically get, am I correct, the finance guys?
And for fiscal year twenty-five, they did, yeah.
Yep, most of the, the entire new levy, okay? So that's the two and a half percent that we can raise taxes. So this error is, doesn't even account for next year's cost of living adjustments, raises next year for just union, you know, increases. So this is very problematic and the fact that the school committee, if I was on the school committee, I would be jumping through hoops to try to get to a meeting to discuss this. And my disappointment isn't necessarily with the staff because it's the school department's responsibility, the school committee's responsibility to oversee the school department, just like ours is, to oversee the finances of our town. That's our responsibility. And where are they?
Um, I think it might be a good idea uh that I reach out to the chair directly of the school committee um and find out what their intention is. And, you know, I'll be sure, I'll make that call tomorrow morning. Um, and I'll make sure that I disseminate the information without a request for response. But there really should be, I mean, they voted their number for FY twenty-five, so that's their number. How they're gonna operate that with, they're gonna have to either reduce their, their budget by that, that amount and find the guts for it. Because I'm, and we're also waiting for an assessment reduction vote as well.
Right, so recommendation, when you have that discussion, to push for a school, a school committee meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair. And I will stress that to the superintendent that the school committee needs to vote because both committees have town meeting. Uh, he's well aware of that, at least when we talked to him. Uh, the Freetown Administrator, myself, had a meeting with him. He was well aware of town meeting and the timelines and didn't want any issues on the floor of town meetings. So he is well aware of the optics of this situation, so.
And Freetown votes aren't doing third, so.
I'll be talking to Mr. Burke in the morning.
That's their town meeting, right?
Really? Two weeks?
Yep. Now, um, I do agree with Brenna that I'd like to hear from Mr. Lacamera because there's another issue with a potential misuse of ESER funds, which is also on the schools, so.
Is this the, Madam Chair, is this the generator?
Yes.
Issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so I'd really like to.
Repurposing for the window funds and it, and it went to a generator.
So I, you know, if that's okay with Madam, with Madam Chair? Just writing myself a note for tomorrow.
Does this affect the FY twenty-five budget in any way?
Um, Chris, this is, this affects FY twenty-four, the generator, right?
When was it, when was it voted?
Twenty-three, I thought.
Twenty-three?
This is year twenty-three.
Okay.
And if I'm not, all right, so I guess the question on the, the floor at the moment is, um, there's some ESER money, which I'm not sure what that exactly stands for, but it's money very similar to what the towns received as um ARPA money um from the government. So there was discussion and a vote taken, I believe, at the school committee for.
FY, uh, county of twenty-one is when the vote was taken.
So this is old business.
This is old, this is old business, right?
Briefly, uh, I would, I, actually, I mentioned it to Bob a couple of months ago, you know, about the generator and so forth and so on. And the um, I hate to say this, but the previous town administrator did follow up on it to make sure that it was taken care of, so I mentioned it to him. So I went to the school committee meeting on March twenty-seventh and I asked a question, you know, about the ESER money. It's not just the generator, by the way. It's, it's more money than that. And um, so nobody could give me an answer at the meeting, so I go to the next meeting on May eighth. And I said, nobody got back to me. And so, once again, nobody's gotten back to me. So the only thing that the superintendent told me about was, uh, what'd you say that meeting? There was a, a school committee meeting on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and one, where he says the school committee didn't vote on it. But the minutes were so bad and so inaccurate that I told him to look at the video and the video was very clear that the school committee did vote on it and it was allocated, you know, to the towns. So I just wanna briefly give you this information, Trina. I just don't know.
If I can just question, so the last school committee meeting that I believe you were in attendance, I recall that the school committee did say that that, by the end of, of that following week, that they would be reaching out with that information. Have you received the, the breakdown for the?
I received an email from the superintendent that I was wrong. Uh, and I said, no, I'm not wrong, uh, because he was looking at the minutes of the meeting and the minutes were completely inaccurate. They were taking very, very long minutes. And I, that's my.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If we can just, if we can just try to, let's get to our, where, where going without.
So the thing is, is that, you know, I told him to look at the, the video. He still hasn't got back to me. So this is today and in my email, I asked him, what was the fund used for, how much was available and so forth and so on. He hasn't responded to any of that whatsoever.
Okay.
So briefly, um, I gave you a document here that uh, um, actually, Todd was very involved in this and Todd, you know, can verify um what was going on. So it was approved by the school committee, so Carol Lee, who was the current uh Finance Director at the time, sent an email to town council, both towns, you know, talking, talking about what was approved and what wasn't approved. So if you look down on the bottom there, there's available funds for capital projects, Freetown, two hundred and thirty thousand, Lakeville, two hundred and twenty-two thousand. So if you read the text, it's very specific on what the money was supposed to use for and how it got voted.
All right, this, this screenshot that we're looking at um was taken on December ninth, twenty twenty-two, just for the record.
That was an email that was sent and Todd confirmed it for me that um this was actually what the result was.
Okay.
So if you go down and you look at the next page, um, ESER two money, the regional school district got nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars in ESER two money. They originally were gonna use that ESER two money to reduce the minimum contribution for the, for the region. The governor said, you can't do that. So you have to use it for a certain purpose and so forth. So what they decided to do was take that ESER money, use some of it at the region and then distribute the other part of it to ESER One City and Freetown. Okay, so that's the result. So this was the initial result down in the bottom of what was voted on uh by the school committee. You could see, you said Freetown, ESER One City, so forth and so on.
Which page do you want, Rich? Just.
Uh, last page, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, that is thirty-seven thousand dollars that was for the windows repair and improvements. If you recall, that was prior to we got the approval from the MSBA to go ahead with the windows and do a project. So this money, I don't have any further documentation. I don't have access to the systems. So after that, it, the generator was put in the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and it's in the two thousand twenty-five budget. Uh, and I, so that's what was agreed to and the superintendent says, that's not true. Oh, I'm sorry, it's not true. It is true. It's absolutely true that, that it was approved. So I was expecting to go to the meeting on Wednesday, Brian, you know, to follow up on this, to get what was resolved. And I was surprised they posted the agenda at nine o'clock this morning and they canceled it at twelve. That seemed a little strange to me, but they need to have a, Leo said, they need to have a school committee right away to address that, to address some of these issues.
What, I need to know, this page right here in the book, the page four, I think it is, what date was this document?
Uh, it was dated, um.
You're trying to find it.
Twenty-two. I, that's just, that's why I was.
Okay, so this is, so we have not, and um, Mr. Plonker, um, you haven't received a current update as to ESER as we are receiving the update on our ARPA this evening. So you have not received that, okay. So that is a request of the towns um for the schools. Question, when is the deadline date for the ESER amount allocation? Ours is the twenty-fifth, twenty, the end of this year. Has to, the check has to be done at the end of twenty-five. Is ESER the same way?
No.
Oh, it has to be used by September twenty-fourth.
And it's, yeah.
But the problem is they use the money.
They use the money, yeah.
They misappropriated.
Right.
Okay, so I think, and I heard the word audit this evening. So there's a good chance that the towns could request.
So we would have, Madam Chair, we would have to do that jointly, correct? Would we do that to the finance committees or select boards?
Uh, we talk of forensic audit? So we've researched that. The forensic audit can only be initiated by a school committee vote.
Okay. All right.
There is, there is an effort to schedule a regional finance subcommittee meeting within the next week.
Okay.
Uh, if that is successful, um, it, the plan is that may be discussed. It may start at that meeting.
Okay, do we, real quick, do we have, um, do we vote a representative from the select board in April? That's, I use, you're so, you're so.
Re- FinCom is still me, I believe.
Okay.
Cause they reached out asking for availability.
Okay.
Madam Chair, question, um, where did you get the information that only the school committee could request an audit? Is that part of the regional agreement? Cause. It is a state law for the region?
So the regional FinCom perhaps could consider a recommendation.
But at the end of the day, it's only the school committee that would be able to.
Madam Chair? Yes. To anybody who knows more than I do right now, so we all know there's a big problem, right? How do we correct it before it gets a bigger problem if we can't compel an audit? Or do we reach out to DOR, Division of Local Services? I mean, who do we? No, I think that's, that's an excellent question. Um, I do know that there's a changing guard right now um with the business department. So there's somebody new that will be assuming that position.
Uh, I was just saying, I would recommend DESI to someone to do so.
Yeah, to DESI. But, you know, and again, no offense to anyone, you know, who's been hired or who's come or who's gone or whatever, but but there is so much inexperience right now and this is perhaps, I can't say what led to the problem, but it is a regional school system. It's not an easy, you know, there's more laws, there's a regional school agreement, there's you know, so much involved. And now here's us trying to prevent us from becoming twenty million dollars in the hole like Brockton. And I feel like our hands are tied, so.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So you've got eight hundred thousand dollars in that other problem, right? You've got four hundred thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars here because the town is equal to a shared amount too. So that's one point two million dollars. Uh, that's a major, major problem.
Are you looking at the, the ESER update on this sheet? Okay.
I'm gonna go on the sheet, totally, four fifty-two.
Oh, no, it must be on the non-page.
First page, first page one.
So the thing is that, um, I, I guess, just to comment on the, I, the eight hundred thousand dollar error. I was shocked, quite frankly. When I originally looked at the budget, the total budget back in January, whenever it came out, I said, this thing doesn't look like, I mean, it looks off by a significant amount of money. I didn't have the budget, you know, I just looked at the totals and I said, can't be right. But, you know, and you should know, Brian, that the, uh, one of the school committee was blamed Excel, you know, did you see that?
Yeah, I did see that.
Brian works for Microsoft.
That's what we call a problem exists between keyboard and mouse.
But, you know, I mean, do the superintendent say it's clerical or, I'm sorry, this guy gets paid a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars a year. He should have caught this, you know, and saw this, you know, this, this is a major problem. Anyways, one suggestion, I, oh, the only comment on the school choice, which I forget who said that, I think it was Leah that said this. You know, the school choice reimbursement is used to offset the assessments for the community for the expenses of the school choice. They're not gonna have any left. It's gonna be completely gone. And as Leah points out, next year, the regional budget, before you even start, is gonna be. be two and a half million dollars in the hole because of wages and so forth and so on. Do you know what that's going to do to the town? It's going to force an override. That's what's going to happen. And it's a terrible thing to happen.
So let me just point out too, that last year, we were told, you know, we needed extra help in the office because of special education. We were going to have two hundred more students that apply for special education slots. So not only didn't that happen, they did hire a secretary or an assistant for the special education director. So.
For eight hundred thousand dollars?
Well, not only didn't that happen, right? But they ended up having twenty less students overall in special education, okay? And here, another issue is six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is not included. That's also called student services. The largest portion of this came from an omission of special education salaries. What is in there that changed from last year to this year that equals? Because that one administrative assistant was, I don't, I mean, I can't imagine an administrative assistant gets more than, what, fifty or sixty thousand dollars? Did they hire positions that they didn't fund for? I mean, I just don't know. And I do understand that the special education director has resigned.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so again, I'm not sure who's going to be left to fix this problem. That's why I think a lot of this responsibility is for us to stay on this.
Madam Chair, to play off where Leah was saying, there is a possibility that the reason is canceled is because they're trying to get their house in order. And they're trying to find out, you know, what's going on and they need more time. And they're, they're punting a little bit to make sure that they've got some time to come up with some answers. But at the same time, there's a level of fiscal irresponsibility that gives me great pause into letting them find that without some professional help.
Assistance.
Yes.
May I seek some clarification?
Yes, Friday.
You said that the one thirty-seven five six six was put into the twenty-five budget? Could you explain that?
It was put in as the generator for the capital project. It was in the twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five budget, using that money, Ursa money, to pay for a new generator for Assam.
It's been there for the past.
It's been there for three years.
So they, I think they're renting one right now because they don't.
Twelve thousand dollars, Brian.
How much?
Twelve thousand dollars.
A year or most?
A year.
So the other question I had was, I imagine, I haven't been involved, I apologize. After COVID, I imagine their budget went up quite a bit to compensate. Is that accurate or no?
It's one of it, but yeah.
Has it come down since?
No.
So an enormous problem that I had when I was on the school committee was the continued purchase of laptops, computers, electronics, every single year for every batch of new students that are coming in. And I know a big issue that they're having is this year's, this year's fourth or fifth graders, excuse me, when they go out, they're going to increase the school. So I don't see that as being a sustainable, a sustainable thing. So I agree with you that it is seemingly a lot of fiscal irresponsibility and maybe priorities not being where they should be.
Madam Chair, if I could just back to, so we purchased originally those additional laptops for the students back in 2020. I think it was like one point three million dollars.
One point three million dollars.
Yeah.
We didn't have to, but we did.
Yeah, we used, we used our money at that point because it was not actually earmarked for the school. It was, it was ours to spend, we spent that. In no way, shape, or form did any of us involved think that that was going to be a forever, everyone gets a laptop.
And now it's about four hundred thousand over here.
Yeah.
Well, I'd asked how they're going to operationalize it because it was a one-time funding and those things, especially when you have kids holding it.
Right.
You'd be lucky to get three or four years.
Well, and we asked that question, Brian. Rich, you probably remember, we said, what is the plan for when these break? And I think the answer was, well, the parents can buy insurance.
Really?
And, but then we also asked the question, back in 2020, what is the plan if this is, you know, going forward? Well, we'll work it in and.
Madam Chair, excuse me. I want to bring up one more point, sir.
With the vote taken for Ursa money back in two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Oh, I thought it was, all right, so twenty-one. We don't know if there's any subsequent votes that were taken by the school committee at this point to reallocate any funds that came, were coming in from Ursa.
Well, I'm going to be honest with you.
I'm going to ask that question.
I'm going to be honest with you. I reviewed their agendas and I reviewed their minutes. The minutes are terrible. They had to hire Tracy.
She's not available.
She takes the best minutes.
It's your retirement gig.
Big boss gets Tracy first.
Just to follow up on your latest question. Last year, I think, Brian, if you recall, they took two hundred thousand dollars E and D for the capital projects, you know, to supplement the budget. This year, they're not taking any out. So I think that they have one point nine million dollars in E and D. They had to get at least two hundred thousand dollars out of E and D and turn it back to the towns to reduce the assessments. Because you guys know, you know, I, I understand what you've done, but you're using one-time revenue to, for the operating budget, which is not a good idea. And everybody agrees with that.
And I know that the school had been talking quite some time about putting in plans for, you know, a capital program like we do here. And I believe they've instituted it. I'm surprised to hear.
They're paying for a formal capital plan to be done.
Two hundred thousand dollars, I believe, is a formal capital plan to be done by an outside party.
An outside firm.
Okay, well, I've way too much right now on that, but if they have a capital plan in place as we do for our town, then they construct and work some of these things in on a cyclical basis and so forth. But right now, I'm playing the call.
I need, I need, I have to stop you, I'm sorry. There's a big problem here. If it is overstaffing, which I just learned from Mr. LaCamera last week, in the teacher's contract, I believe, they have to be notified if they're laying people off by May first.
Absolutely, yeah, there's a timeline.
It's already gone.
It's already gone. So I don't, if it is overstaffing, I don't even know how they, so this really is.
A concern, major concern.
Major concern.
Madam Chair, I feel like we, we all have said, yes, there's a problem, but I feel like we still don't have quite the scope of how big the problem is. So you add up, you add up all the anomalies in the budget and then you add up how many other of these haven't been done. I don't think we have the full number, sadly. So how do we get to that? And if we can't force an audit of some kind, is Freetown and Lakeville just going to swing in the breeze?
No.
I mean, can Desi step in? Can somebody else step in?
That's actually, I don't even know what chairperson I'm supposed to talk to this morning.
It's a roundtable discussion.
Yeah, just chairs. Exactly. We seem to have so little control over the school department, school budget. It drives me nuts. It's been my biggest, half the reason I got into this. It's unsustainable. I don't care what city or town it is, these budgets are unsustainable. Brockton's twenty million, and all, Park, and I don't know what they're doing over there building these huge projects, but whatever it is, this town, Lakeville, cannot sustain this budget. It's not possible without overrides. You can't keep going back to the taxpayer saying, we need more money, we need more money. We've talked about this, thirty-three percent of our population don't have kids. So you're really bleeding them dry. My question is, what can we do about this? They seem to run ramshod of us like we have no say. The way I look at it, the school department works for us, not the other way around. We have the taxpayer. So what's our, should we just vote no on their budget? Refuse their budget? Now it has to go to the state and they have to revert back to last year's budget. It gets paid out quarterly.
Monthly budget, which is eight hundred in the hole potentially already.
So, all right, so I mean, is that, that's our, that's a possibility. I mean, it's some type, I mean, they're canceling meetings, they're not scheduling meetings, they're blowing apart budgets because Excel is a bad product. Sorry, Brian. It's not, it's not. Listen, I work in Excel every single day. It's pretty, you know, total software. It works pretty good. If I can figure it out, I'm hoping our school department can. What can we do to force the hand?
It's, well, like I said, I'm going to reach out to John Burke tomorrow, but there definitely has to be, I don't want to say like, you know, it'll be forceful in a respectful way.
How much should we give our legal department today? How much should we transfer for legal? Should we get a little extra cushion?
Go back and do more.
Maybe we need to talk to them.
So, Mr. Noon's, you and I will make the call tomorrow.
Sounds good.
John Burke and the superintendent. And I think that we need to have that meeting scheduled ASAP.
While we're discussing the school, I had sent an email to everybody. I had been reached out to by the vice chair about regarding a janitor contract vote. As the school department liaison, is that something that I do or someone else does?
Um, I don't.
I'm the liaison, I don't think you have any, any responsibility or authority to discuss.
Right.
You can just share it.
Right, when we were negotiating, you know, teacher contracts in the past, we sent a representative to sit in on it, but it was not a vote.
Okay.
They could provide the input back to the discussion as to where the towns stand and fed back to the towns, but it is not, that is the school committee vote.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I ask that you also reach out to Desi to find next steps for problems with regional?
I have a note here too. Mr. Noon's, if you can just nudge me on that one to reach out to Desi.
Madam, perhaps we collect also a list of outstanding informational answers that they haven't provided?
I have here right now a question of the Ursa money, the assessments back to the town. What else, Brian?
I don't know, are you reading anything, Chris?
The eight hundred.
I have that note here, the error, what they plan on doing that.
And if it really is an error, they found.
You just have another re-ending for capital projects.
Yep.
Okay.
The repeat janitor in the budget, generator?
That's probably the note here that I have with the Ursa three. And then the capital out of the E and D, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
And, and the next meeting, right? To push for the next meeting?
Yes, to push.
To ask them to push a meeting before.
Yes, before Freetown's meeting.
Before town meeting, which is.
Before Freetown's. Freetown's.
There's in two weeks, I was in three weeks.
Yep, so there's, next week is the twenty-seventh and then the week after that.
So if that isn't handled by then, if this, these matters aren't handled by then, we vote their budget in blindly?
So that brings up, what do we do with our own budget tonight? Recommendations, Mr. Noon's?
I would think we should hold.
Okay, then we will hold.
Thank you.
Rich, I appreciate you taking the time to tell my note that you, you were very.
I really didn't want to do it, but I knew that this man was sitting there and nobody followed up. Just one further thing, Mr. Prior Finance Director, Kayla.
Kara.
Kara, thank you. She gave the RFP a year ago to the superintendent about the generator and he did nothing. He didn't follow up on that at all.
Thank you.
Just one more thing, they haven't cut anything out of their budget yet.
So, they wanted to take that.
They were supposed to cut the budget. Correct, wasn't the agreement that they were going to cut their budget by X amount of dollars back?
Well, they were right where they needed to be, but with this extra eight hundred thousand dollars. And they must have hired physicians or something that, that was not in their twenty-twenty-four budget.
Unfortunately, we go back, sorry, I apologize for interrupting. We go back to the, I don't remember the date, this might help. The first meeting when the superintendent first unveiled the budget numbers, the FY25. Unfortunately, Lakeham wasn't there that night's work.
February fourteen.
February fourteen? Okay, Sweethearts Day.
Yes.
She had to open up.
I believe the comment was something along the lines of, any dollar less than this will result in loss of capital. And that was back when it was the full number. And then, you know, thankfully to Mr. Noon's and others, they came and said, okay, all right, we'll drop it down by four hundred thousand or whatever it was.
Right, right.
So now it's, now we add on another eight hundred or so, whatever the number ends up being like, I don't even know what question to ask.
I mean, I remember in a budget meeting, every school increased their substitute line except for one, except for the middle school. And I questioned, is this a trend? Are we seeing, you know, more folks going out? Why does one school, you know? So there's no rhyme or reason. And I think it's just full of the errors that, that they spend hours looking for. And I.
Does anybody know who the vice chair is on the school committee? It's a Freetown.
Yes, it's Will.
Oh, it's Will?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. All right, no, thank you. I want to make sure that I, you know, is in touch with those of them. We'll reach out tomorrow. Okay, so we are not voting our budget tonight. Can we bring it back on the third, please?
Absolutely.
Now, Freetown will be voting their budget at their town meeting. We have to go with a balanced budget with regards to our regionals. So this really has to happen in the next, they've got forty-eight hours to post, so. All right.
So remember Candino's comment earlier, I mean, it's okay to say we want more time to figure things out, but I think there's a certain amount of responsibility and accountability to hold a meeting just to say, yes.
I agree.
We admit something here doesn't add up, we're looking into it and get back to it.
Yeah, clock is ticking.
You have five minutes. Hybrid.
Could be more than five minutes.
Yeah.
He's lying, can you show him how to use auto something?
Nope, apparently not.
It happened?
Okay, all right, well, listen, thank you very much for this. I look forward to rejoining you on the third. So we're going to move to table, the discussion of budget vote to the third.
The whole, the whole thing? The whole thing?
The whole budget. So there's a, you move a motion, Brian?
I move, so move to table.
Second.
Um, any discussion? None, vote out by.
Bailey and I.
Tony Hugh, I.
I'm on the I.
And you're the I.
They are.
All right, so we will be voting our budget on the third.
Madam Chair, the, I think you would also be the Warren's article review?
That is correct, it's going to be a.
One-stop shop?
One-stop shop.
One-day snacks.
You can snack.
Yeah, you did, you brought all that candy.
All right, I'll sign up for snacks, you guys get snacks.
If you bring sliced oranges, you're out.
Capri Sun.
That's it.
So we thought we'd, we, no other business for the finance committee to make?
Yes.
I, I put it under, believe.
I don't think so. I'm looking really quick down here, I don't believe there was.
There was two.
Anything else? Okay.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to close the finance committee meeting.
Sure.
Second.
Go ahead, Paul.
Fields, I.
Coste, and I.
Bunker, I.
Great, nice pass.
Motion passed.
And again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready? Are we buckled in with the next few agenda items? We ready?
You going to eleven?
No, I'm not going to eleven o'clock tonight.
No, no.
No, item eleven.
Just making sure. No, yes.
All right, I'm just gonna step out, I'll be right back. You, you can get started.
Okay. So, eleven. Let me get there myself. Okay, so in front of us this evening, we're here to discuss and vote to approve a new host community agreement for an existing medical marijuana cultivation operation, otherwise known as Bonneville Farms, located at two hundred Kenneth Welsh Drive. Their first um, host community agreement, believe it or not, has um, bet their five-year timeframe. Um, so they are doing this for five years, so um, at this point, when they're to renew, they have to come back in front of um, the select board um, for renewal, to continue. So, that's what we have in front of us this evening. So, attaches the host community agreement for Bonneville Farms, which has been signed um, by them, and we received from our town council um, for the board signature. So this has been um, vetted through town council. This has been vetted through uh, their council, um, and it is a document um, that has come to us for approval. So, did everybody have a chance to review? I'm, I'm pretty familiar. I know um, Maureen, Leah, and even Brian, very familiar with the host community. Janet, did you have some questions about um?
I was kind of gonna trust you guys on this one.
Okay.
I know that we looked at this briefly before.
Yep.
What changed? Did anything change?
I think the only thing that um, that is not included in here, there was some, and anybody jump in here? You know, um, for, for help if I need it. Um, the CCC, which is the Cannabis Control Commission, periodically goes in to review their um, their regulations. And back in November of twenty-two, uh, they had gone in, reviewed their regulations and had made some changes. When the original HCA, or let's just say marijuana companies were coming to municipalities and entering um, host community agreements, there was uh, a lot of language that would support um, let's say contributions um, to the town, whether it be a benefit fee or...
Or community impact fee.
Or impact fee, um, or any other negotiated...
Some donations.
Right. And the CCC has determined that none of that is um, I don't want to say relevant, enforceable. Um, so, that being said, with the ending of the five-year contract or agreement with one of our marijuana companies, if going into the new one, we had to make sure that that language was removed.
Got it.
So right now, um, the company will receive um, real estate tax and personal property tax as any other business in town.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to add anything to that? Sorry, my...
No, I think you've covered it.
My analogies are really picking up right now.
Pretty much nailed it. There was some additional regulation on needing to prove actual fees expended to deal with issues you mitigated in town that might be related to them, but pretty much now it's um, I think we, as much as we didn't want to, since the state sold us on the old calculation, I think it's just, things are trending toward, more towards, okay, this is standard business, there's not a whole bunch of other stuff we're gonna treat them as.
Okay.
This is one step.
Yep, and um, for anyone listening at home, um, this host community agreement is for growing and medical. This is not recreational, because we do not have any current active recreational where we would actually make three percent.
Three percent, correct.
Yeah, so um, this is kind of one of those ancillary.
Okay.
All right, so I will entertain a motion um, to approve this new host community um, agreement for the existing medical marijuana cultivation operator um, known as Bonneville Farms at two hundred Kenneth Welsh Drive.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, Leah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, um, please vote aye.
Oh, uh, Fabian, aye.
Tony Hugh, aye?
Carbone, aye.
Candy, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the ARPA update, um, possible vote on these items. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Nunes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, we've been working on ARPA for the last um, several months, and um, based on the votes that the committee took several weeks back, Christina has been working closely with Plymouth County, and she has entered the projects in the portal. So I thought it would be best if she attended the meeting to kind of summarize what she has experienced over the last week or so.
So, since, I think it was in April, that the select board um, approved the projects that you wanted to submit to the county. Um, and so on May first, Bob and I met with um, Clifton Larson Allen. They're the consultants that um, Plymouth County is working with. Um, and the goal of that initial meeting was just to confirm the eligibility of the various projects that you all approved, um, and then to, to confirm which categories each of them belonged in. Um, and so we did that. Um, we found out that all but the resurf, so all of the, I think there were eight projects in total. Um, the resurfacing of Howland Road is not an eligible project. Um, so it, it, I think it probably could have been if we were to use um, thank you, replacement revenue. Um, but most of those funds have already been sort of identified for other projects. Um, and I, from what I understand, the, the county has a pretty strict policy on not entertaining road resurfacing projects under any other category. Um, so there are seven other projects. Um, all of them have now been submitted into the portal. Um, we know that all of them are eligible. Um, we will not know for a bit, I don't actually know how long, um, whether or not they've actually been approved. We are continuing to work with CLA to clarify some of the questions pertaining to the deadlines for reimbursement grants versus advancement grants. Um, but we will certainly keep you posted. I think it's probably worth sort of keeping this on the agenda um, until we get all of our questions answered. Um, so, you were given in your packets, um, the county ARPA breakdown um, that includes the seven projects that we are looking at. Um, so there is a balance. If we were to proceed with all of these projects, um, we would have a balance of two hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Um, the reason that number is so high is because the road resurfacing project isn't eligible, so if it had been, that number would be closer to like fifty-six or so. Um, and so what we've asked Bob McNally to do is to work with TMLP um, to investigate some opportunities um, with regards to infrastructure for broadband, um, because that is something that both the county and the federal government have really been pushing. Um, I'm hesitant to say more about that because it is in no way baked. We just wanted to sort of get some ideas together for opportunities that might be viable. Um, and so, uh, we're looking specifically at um, fiber opportunities at Clear Pond. Um, and then we've also asked TMLP to put together um, a sort of fiber map, so we can see where the holes are um, around town. So, um, if, you know, if, if such a project materializes, then we'll present it to you.
Are we talking like a fiber, is loop like we had, or you have Middleborough?
So, um, we don't have, so my understanding is that we don't have concentric loops in town. Um, Bob and I have been working over the last couple of years, um, to, so we, so we did finally unite those five municipal buildings that were not part of the network previously. Um, I know Bob is working right now on some, again, this is because it's a public meeting, I want to be careful about, um, you know, not sort of revealing all of our trade secrets relative to our disaster recovery operation, but um, but we have dedicated a lot of grant money towards our cybersecurity um, and our ISPs and sort of making sure that um, if there was a failure, for example, at town hall, the whole town would, ooh, excuse me, go down. Um, but, so what this would do, so with the course of the last couple of years, um, one of the things that sort of comes up again and again every year is why can't Clear Pond um, accept credit cards during the summer? Um, and there are a couple of reasons for that, but one of the big ones is that there isn't fiber there. Um, and so, Bob is working with TMLP to come up with a plan and to try to get an estimate for what that would cost. I can't imagine that we're talking about, what, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars? So I mean, even if it, say, costs half of that, um, then maybe there, maybe there are holes in other parts of town that we could expand to. So, um, so I don't know. It was just an idea. Um, is, it would certainly be an eligible project. Um, whether it's something you all decide you want to proceed with is a wholly different conversation. Um, I think that's, that's, that's most of it, yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, what is water project exactly?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, the, all right, so first of all, I want to preface this by saying that I am not an ARPA guru and have not been involved in the federal piece of this. Um, I've only recently dug into the county projects. Um, but I understand that there, the project that we had um, at the old town hall for the bathrooms, um, was originally submitted as a water infrastructure project and was initially rejected um, because it would, it provided like bathroom water supply in a public building. So, we ended up filing it under um, revenue replacement, um, and it, it passed under that. I don't totally understand why, um, and what the distinction is between water projects, but I, I think it's sort of specific to...
Drinking?
Like drinking water.
But that is just for that, that's not for John Pond, right?
That looks like it's both.
John Pond, the septic. The Ted Williams camp. There was the, the new, the old pump, I was getting rid of that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't...
The leaky pump.
No, it's okay.
It explodes every year.
So yeah, so that's three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. The reason that that's highlighted is because we don't really know what's gonna happen with the John Pond project. Um, and so, it, it is possible, and I certainly hope that this is not the case, right? But like, it is possible that you decide, like, just not to proceed with the water piece of that project, in which case, the total number of what we have left to work with would change.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, instead of losing that money, I mean, we had a pretty good um, explanation given to us by the engineers of how, you know, conversations and coming into a deal with, you know, the neighborhood there close by, contract negotiations had failed and everything else. So I still don't understand why we're keeping that money earmarked for something that I don't think is ever gonna happen. So, at the risk of losing it, I would just assume we say, yeah, we're not... I know we all, we all tried. We said it that night. We all tried really, we really tried to make that happen there, to get the water there, but um...
I had a follow-up, just a question.
The cu, the county won't cover...
It's just they won't do a well.
They won't cover a well, so we would have had to...
Blueberry Estates wouldn't let us tie in.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood all of it.
But there wasn't a solution. If we wanted to pay for it, then it caught me at the cost like another hundred and fifty grand or something like that. So that, and that would have been...
A direct shoot off, off the road.
Basically, we would have owned from our meter, wherever that was, probably close to the master meter, all the way into John Pond Park.
And besides John Pond Park, there's no other?
Where was our master meter at that point?
The ma, well, the master one's up by Blueberry Estates, so we would have a meter. We would, they were asking us to go a longer loop and tie in by the Taunton meter, and then our, we'd be metered up there, and then that pipe all the way to John Pond, we would manage.
But we don't have a water department, so we would have to pay Taunton annually to manage that for us, right?
No, it'd be like opening and closing irrigation systems. As opposed to if we try to well, then we turn into a secondary public drinking water supply, it gets nasty.
Not the way.
It was just expensive, though, was the, the biggest part.
What was the net? I know you said it's a hundred and fifty more, but what is the total?
I wouldn't quote me on it, but I want to say it was like, that project went from like a hundred and fifty to like three hundred. Like, we would have had to allocate more.
Yeah.
So the three thirty-two that you see on that spreadsheet, I, I want to say that's three projects, and John Pond is one of them. Yeah.
So we would, eh, you know, in this instance, if we weren't, if we didn't think it was viable, we would reallocate that money to a project that we thought would actually pass. Not saying that the project's not a good project. Just not one that we can, we can complete in the time that we need to and allocate the resources to.
I mean, I'd also like to reiterate that, you know, I know parents have concerns, because, you know, the kids have sports there and everything, but it, you know, it hasn't been forty years of folks enjoying using porta-potties there. It's just getting water there is very difficult.
So, if, if I may, Madam Chair, um, back last year, there was a massive push from the federal government on water infrastructure, and there's funds to be had for water infrastructure projects. I don't know if we would qualify. Um, and once we get uh, our status back up um, for open space, um, we can start looking for grants again for open space and, and DCR grants, so we can, we can take another bite at it and try to, uh, to move forward, because I know, um, there's a heartfelt group that wanted to move forward with this, and if we can find some federal funds or some state funds, and we can get creative with some grant writing, you know, I, I've got to take another stab at it, but I agree that we should at this point, in, in this, this time, reallocate those funds to, uh, to, for other projects.
Well, might be worth saying, Madam Chair, and Berta probably knows more about this than I do, I believe back at, one of the more recent town halls, we also approved money for an engineering study at John Pond, and the availability or lack of availability of water could affect the outcome of what that would be, that sounds right.
So that was coming from the CPA?
Right.
And there was a discussion about whether those funds were valid because the water issue was there. But then, I believe that Parks kept that fund, um, and they were going to use that to do a different design, or rather, you know, incorporate other things into the design. But will CPA, can CPA funds be used to help this? Like, we were talking about reaching out to grants and things. CPA, I think they only approved one project.
It has to fall under certain categories.
Yeah.
So we, you'd have to figure out what that category is. They only bring in two hundred and sixty, three hundred a year, something like that, and then it would be some sub portion of that.
Because some have to go on the other, some have to go to...
Come in as well, you know, to allocate, but I...
I think they were gonna pay for the engineering.
Yes.
And then, we were hopefully gonna use the ARPA funds to make the project happen, but I don't want to lose the money for...
So I think that, you know, um, what Member Card, uh, Candito had mentioned, it's on our radar, and I really think that we could put some really good energy into this to try to make it come to fruition.
Sorry, I've covered in ink.
Bad ten, bad ten. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we figure it out, you know, I mean, we tap into our resources and, and put a plan together and, you know, try to address it. So, but there, obviously, the parks, which is not part of this discussion, will have to work toward um, a, you know, a, a temporary solution or immediate...
You know, the engineering plan would cover the otherwise, and not the work that they would have to do, that's the other issue. So...
Well, I know that we have to get this money allocated, um, in, what do they call it, ready?
Shovel ready.
Yeah, across the body, shovel ready. It's, we're, um, so I'm now very quickly starting to get out of my depth, so apologies, but um, at the beginning of the meeting, Bob passed out the federal summary, um, and water infrastructure is a category um, within the, the federal program. Um, and there is still some money there as well.
Okay.
So that's just worth sort of keeping in mind. But even if you decided to sort of table it as a county project, um, it's possible that we could consider it as a federal project.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Through you to um, either Bob or Christina, the categories that the county's working off of, are those federal coun, categories they adopted, or they made up on their own?
I assume they adopted.
Okay.
They're using the federal guidelines.
Yeah, they use federal guidelines, Brian, and at every county meeting, they express how strict they are. Even, that, that was the case with Care's money too, because they didn't want to have to ask anyone to pay anything back. Because in some communities, the uses have been a little more lax, and then some communities had to pay some money back. So they believe that they're using the auditing firm to just vet everything, so there will be no... so there will be no reason to have to make anyone pay anything back because it wasn't an appropriate use.
The, the challenge we're in, this happened in twenty-one or twenty-two, was we wait so long to get answers back, and now we're, I mean, we're partially responsible for being up against the deadline here. But, you know, we wait so long to get answers back to find out, A, is it eligible, and B, are you gonna approve it or not? But all this time passes by, we're, we're just gonna rush to do things.
Right.
Instead of doing things we wanted to do. I mean, that's, that's unfortunate.
I mean, back during CARES, they rejected a
Five times.
Less than five-dollar amount of a receipt for something, so. Um, yeah.
I did find the number, Madam Chair, that the alternative that Environmental Partners gave us increased the John Pond cars by another, by another hundred and fifteen. I forget the original number, but it was an e- an extra one fifteen we would need.
I think we, we, our eyebrows went up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay, so looking at the cover sheet, just to, to confirm, without, um, the approval of the items that we have submitted, um, on April twenty-second, uh, available through Plymouth County with eight hundred eighteen thousand three ninety-one twenty-nine. So if these items were approved, um, we would have a balance of two sixty-six nine forty-seven twenty-nine. Am I on the right track?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So the direct funding from the federal government, um, based on what we've already requested, we have a balance of four hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty thirty-one.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so does Howland Road resurfacing?
Doesn't.
It's not covered under the Plymouth County, however, um, that could be moved under direct funding?
Potentially.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to, cause I know that we have moved something off the capital.
We could check.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll have to ask, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure that, in the same way that it doesn't sort of, um, like, fit nicely into any of the categories under the county program. Um, I think we're likely to have similar problems with the federal program, but I don't, but I don't know that, so we'll look into it.
Also, oh, I, I was just gonna say, Madam Chair, I know Brian has
That's right, I was going.
Yeah, a couple of really good ideas to our last ARPA conversation, and I don't know if you have the chance to talk to them about those, cause, um,
The three I sent in to Bob and Lorraine last week, or from a while
Um, the ones from Ted Williams that I thought you had.
The, the parking lot?
Yeah.
And then, um,
I'm happy to speak if the chair would like.
Start with the parking lot.
So, well, I wasn't ready for that, let me open up my material. So, the, the, the main parking lot over at Ted Williams Camp, right, so every time we do voting, any event that's held over there, um, you know, this past weekend was a great example, uh, whatever day we got all that rain, when we were supposed to get a quarter inch of rain and just downpour. Um, the whole lot is just so undulated that there's tons of pools, it's really just terrible conditions, especially if you're there for some, you know, big fancy event that you paid all this money for. Um, you know, my thought is that, you know, I, I did reach out to DPW and just said, what's a ballpark, you think, on this? And, um, you know, they said, well, I, and the numbers I sent in the email actually included the large lot, the little lot next to the basketball courts, and the little lot over by the horseshoe pits and volleyball. So if you, I think all in on that was forty or fifty thousand in engineering, and then three and a quarter or so for paving, grading, drainage, the whole soup to nuts. But if you were to focus only on the large lot, because the smaller ones likely be easier for us to fit into a capital plan later, the numbers come down significantly. Um, I think there was still around twenty-five, thirty for engineering, but you're probably back closer to like a hundred and fifty or so for paving and everything else.
Cause that's a complete pay-over.
That's a whole reconstruction of the lot, everything, and then you end up with drainage in place, the thing being flat, paved, lined, looks great, you're not gonna, you know, get your heels stuck in it, go to a wedding in the winter. It's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an eyesore, unfortunately.
But that's asphalt, though, that's
Yep.
Cause every, if I'm not mistaken, um, that pile that we see there, um, in that parking lot all the time, let's get to regrade it down.
Not, not for that lot.
Okay.
That's for elf- other places in towns, it's a little dissonant.
Okay. Do you charge DPW rent?
Yeah.
At one point, Madam Brian said, uh, the thing we gotta be careful about is, um, environmental, environmental and conservation issues, uh, issues with asphalt.
Like
I found that out when I was dealing with, what I'm dealing with over there.
Mm-hmm.
And so when you do the engineering study, you're gonna have to figure out where the COA is over by the ball fields. So I think that's why it's always been like that, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's a price thing.
Madam Chair, if I could, you're not wrong, we discussed it before, back in twenty-twenty, when they were doing, um, the karate studio, where we were talking about that, and, um, the issue was the shedding of water over to the COA side. And co- coming up, and they had proposed, forgot, like a French drain, or, you know, some other, like, proposal to, to mitigate the, uh, the runoff to the COA, but yeah.
And I would certainly, you know, hope that the engineering would catch that for us, and thinking back and said, for whatever reason, we can't pave this.
Yeah.
Project's probably cheaper then, for, because then you'd have to use millings or gravel or whatever that's gonna be permeable into the ground.
Ted Williams is a big puzzle, cause you have different areas, and different regulations, and it's just crazy. Before we do anything, we have to jump through hoops.
But isn't it, um, more cost-effective to have a study or review done for all three areas at the same time? And then, based on the outcome of those
You would hope so.
Reviews?
Yeah, so in talking to DPW, like, there is not a ton of upfront savings if you were to do all three at once, because you still gotta pay a labor rate, just because of the asphalt, you're not gonna repay them again to roll out all the equipment again. So, if you were to pay to get the engineering done for all three of them, then yes, you could then likely choose this project versus that project. Um, or all or none, whatever it might be, but then we, we have an understanding of what, what it would actually be.
Right.
My concern is that this is likely a project that would almost always fall to a lower priority than other things that are capital improvement. I think we're always gonna find an excuse not to do it, and it's just never gonna get better, and this is an opportunity to consider.
We did at North Fields, though, if you take a look at that.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing, do you not want us to consider it?
No, no, I, I'm, this is a money issue, this is what I hear, that's all. I think anything we can do to improve Ted Williams is unbelievable, but if money's, if we can do what we did down there, and it's gonna cost fifty percent less, then at least we're solving most of the problem.
We could look into it. That was one of three, um, if you wanna, can talk to the others, or
Yeah, could you talk, I was looking for it on, and I couldn't find it on my phone.
No, happy to, so, um, the one I really do wanna take a few minutes is Clear Pond Park. So, you've all probably heard me say, you know, we've been waiting for a master plan for over a year, and like, we haven't seen it, right? So, um, previous Chair Turcat had mentioned that Select Board was supposed to vote on that, we never heard anything. So, ooh, what's that? That caught my attention, so I did some research, and lo and behold, we did have on a draft agenda, that exact item, to discuss a engineering plan for Clear Pond, and by the, and at the time, we apparently had not received something from Environmental Partners, so it got pulled off the file, but it never came back. So, immediately we're like, what the heck happened, what happened here? Cause I was still Chair at the time, I would have absolutely put it on there, haven't we seen it come in? So, Bob thanks to reach out to EP, time with the partners, and they said, yeah, we delivered all that, um, in November twenty-three. I'm like, where'd that go? Never came back, we put it on agenda. So, you know, I'll eat crow and say, yeah, we, we didn't act on it, you know, it got to the office, we didn't know about it. And that was approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars, I think, and that was, that was a full engineering study of Clear Pond. I asked, they confirmed that that would include any accessibility issues that were with the pond and such. And, um, they also provided us a bunch of material on example plans that they've done for other municipalities to give us an idea of what it would look like if we were to execute something like that. So hopefully you'll pass on my apology to
Oh, no problem, we saw your email, and there's no, I mean, it has nothing to do with you guys.
Yep.
Of course not, cause you guys jump on things right away.
I, I think that's what we were talking about, though, when we had, you know, you and, and at least Bella and whatever, and we were saying, you know, tell us what, what you want to see, you know, instead of just saying, oh, let's just fix this, or let's just fix that. You know, but I, I thought again that CPA, maybe I'm confusing projects, but I thought that there was, um, some work that was being done for CPA to pay for a couple of engineering studies.
They turned it down, and took it away from us.
All right, gotcha. All right, so
So that was the second.
All right, so Clear Pond has been engineered?
It could be.
Could be.
Could be.
Be funded.
That would be, that would be for the engineering plan itself, the thirty-nine-four, whatever.
There's no funding for Clear Pond, just for John Pond.
So Environmental Partners has not engineered?
No, that, what they sent us was essentially, this is the task list that would be executed, and the rough cost of that.
Okay.
And then that never came back to us. Um, it, you know, they, they forwarded us the mails, it went to the former town administrator and the planner.
Okay.
And don't, lost in the ether at that point.
Use of ARPA funds?
Don't.
Oh, no.
Engineering, I don't know.
Maybe engineering towards recreational purposes, so we'd have to look at
I like, don't wanna lose any of this money, I will jump into a twenty-minute Zoom meeting every day next week, in the morning or whatever, for us to vote it, right?
We, we did use ARPA funds for engineering on the North Fields. Are you dead? Yes.
Okay. If those county or federal, they could figure it out.
I mean, I, I would absolutely entertain, um, this for Clear Pond.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause that would give us exactly what we were asking for a few weeks ago.
That's right.
Instead of just saying, well, you know, we could do this, or, you know, put that, or we should get rid of the spence, or make a grass area.
We don't try to do it now, we'll never get the money, because they're all working down, working on John Pond, so it's gone.
Can I ask Brian to give me the last item?
Yes, please.
What would you like?
The last one, please.
Uh, so the final item was the, the lighting at the majors field at Ted Williams, so the baseball field with four or five poles of lights over here. Uh, my understanding is there's a significant number of them out right now, the leagues have recently inquired, like, hey, can we get some new bulbs or ballasts? And there's just no funding for it. Um, so, um, Facilities Director Paul Nie had last year gone and gotten some quotes on that, and that was, we're looking at, I think it was a not to exceed number of like twelve, thirteen thousand dollars for place everything, including bulbs and ballasts. The challenge is that they still use the old metal highlight bulbs. The bulbs are fifteen hundred watts each, the ballasts are another hundred and hundred and fifty watts each. Um, the person that had given the quarter time, uh, I forget what metal highlight actually is on the inside, but, um, they even said, look, the price of these things is going up because so many people are moving away from them, everybody's going to LED. So if you're spending money on these, great, but to get replacements further and further down the road is likely gonna get more expensive and harder to do, and longer lead times. And so, um, I did ask Paul, like, hey, and told him, I said, no, you're busy, but if there's any way, could they re-quote this with an LED upgrade? And we're still waiting on the number, um, but they were able to give us some figures that said that, um, a couple of positive things. If you replace them light by light, and same, like, just literal same number of lights, you'd lower your, your power usage by like fifty to sixty percent. But the LED units that are out there, and they, they gave us the numbers that are required for a ball field, and they said, look, the LED units we're looking at put out more than the metal highlight bulbs, you actually could probably end up with fewer units, even at fewer, you know, wattage each. So your fifty to sixty percent less power could maybe be even more, if we, I think this is like twenty or thirty lights over now.
So it would be going through, like, Ted Williams Tunnel, if you did them all, like, that binding?
Right, right. So, that, that seemed like something that, A, helps us provide services to the leagues that want to play. I remember when I was a little kid in Little League, playing under the night, uh, nightlights was like the thing, like, that's the thing.
We would have town coming over, we would have All-Star games and go, it was like being in Fenway.
Yeah. Um, and
Now, this is just one.
There's one right here, and I think there's another one at John Pond that could be interesting.
Yeah, the one at John Pond is, we've gotten to a lot of problems with the electrical, we have those big storms, so that really needs to be done too. Um, could about use the same.
But if you quoted it, would you quote both?
We could.
Or would you quote one?
I mean, this is the one, I don't know the status of the lights at John Pond, I just heard that these ones had a significant number out. Potentially, if you replace these, you suddenly have a surplus of used parts to fix the other one, depending on if they're the same or not.
They are still being used, by the way, it's just, like Brian says, there's some dark areas, and, you know, we don't forget, we have an Oscar nest of them, that's never But just to give you a history, that was privately funded, the lights, by parents of baseball, we raised all the money to put those in.
Little League, when we were involved in that, we paid for the ball do- lace a lot.
We paid for everything down there, the parents did.
A lot, yeah, we did.
Yeah.
A lot of money.
But we used to have double headers under the lights on Friday nights, it was fantastic.
Get the services working for the, the leagues again, it's, it's a great community win on power and safety. I mean, you have a dark field in certain spots, and you're trying to catch a fly ball, that's not good.
So for the upgrade, what would the
I'm, I'm waiting for those numbers right now.
What would the ballpark cost?
I don't have a ballpark in the ballpark, sadly, we tried to get it, but the, um, the vendor was taking some time off, so we don't have it yet.
So, oh, so the, i- it's a specific vendor, it's not like going through, uh,
Well, just to get the ballpark figured.
Ballpark, yeah.
Yeah.
And it will also help our green communities, um, bridges our and we can keep it under the twenty percent.
Yeah.
So that would be
Our biggest issue to anything that does happen is getting anyone to go up there, cause that's a lot of money to go up and get the rain and stuff.
Sure, and they last longer, the LEDs last longer.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
All right, so before you move on, just to correct the record, um, so, uh, Frank Moniz is watching from home, and he sent Bob a text message, um, to correct that, um, we, we are, we're incorrect, it is not Howland Road that is, um, ineligible, it's, um, well, it's all paving, um, but it's Southworth and Leonard, not Howland.
I thought it was the two streets, yeah, Howland Road was the big one for seven hundred thousand.
They're always watching, they go
Yeah.
So basically, because we approved all three, right, so all three are gone?
No, we only approved two.
Oh, I thought that we did part of Howland, no?
No, I don't think we did Howland, cause it was seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, right, we didn't do it.
Oh, that was the really big one, okay.
So apologies for that, so it's, so I, I can send out a corrected version of this spreadsheet, but it's not, so it's not Howland Road, it's Southworth and Leonard. Um, but either way, it is ineligible, so. Okay.
I read the rate, I'll join the meeting any morning next week to afford the money.
So, um, we're waiting on the lighting bid, we're waiting on, um, a cost for
Lighting bid, or lighting ballpark figure for the ballpark lights?
Yeah.
We're waiting on that, cause I couldn't tell you, like, hey, I'd say reserve sixty thousand, and then it comes in, and they're like, oh, it's a hundred and twenty, like, that'd be silly.
Right.
But the
I did also get a correction from a CPA member who said that there was never a plan submitted to CPA for, um, Clear Pond, just John Pond, Pond, so.
I don't, do you remember?
So, we submitted for John Pond, and we had discussed with the Select Board about what we would do to improve Clear Pond. We each did goals, we narrowed them down, we submitted that, but we didn't hear back.
That's a few too.
Yeah, we never actually went to CPA for that, but I think the Parks project for that was policy events for Clear Pond.
Right.
So, the Clear Pond engineering never went to CPA because we were gonna wait to see what the Select Board did first, and then
Okay, perfect. All right, did you get all that?
We did.
Because I, I'll tell you, it would be very difficult for me to recall all of that.
Are we, do we want any votes tonight, or we wanna come back after some of the clarifications?
Do we have any hard numbers for, um, voting on these right now, Brian?
I'm looking right now, so the paving, I could tell you, I just fa- finally found my stuff, I put it in the wrong meeting folder. Um, three hundred and fifty, all in, very, very, very rough estimate, Frank said, very rough estimate, but that's all three lots. Um, so he estimated pavement of the big lot is a hundred and twenty-five, you're probably still looking at thirty K or so for engineering, so you're probably a hundred and fifty-five, probably bump it a little bit to be safe for the big lot.
One seventy.
I'm just concerned about the use of asphalt, and, um, I know there is some at, outside the karate studio, so I don't know what the difference would be, but
Because you're not in the same area as you are down there.
An engineering plan, if they're available to work on, it should come back in a couple of weeks, three weeks maybe, depending on availability, and they might come right back and say, can't cause of natural heritage, or water shedding, or whatever, so forget paving, now it's this, and maybe the number goes
Okay, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Um, just procedurally, should we go through and rescind funding on the projects that are ineligible?
No, no, yeah.
First, no? Okay.
Cause there may be more.
I feel like we should prioritize Clear Pond, because where we are, opening to Middleborough and Freetown, Clear Pond needs help, Clear Pond needs work, and this other stuff, it, it, we need it, and it's great and everything, but I don't see it as pressing as Clear Pond, simply because we're not losing money on a parking lot, we're not losing money on the baseball lights, but we're losing money on Clear Pond. And I feel like anything we can do to move forward Clear Pond, becoming better and making more money and not having that deficit, so And I feel like anything we can do to move forward Cleopond, becoming better and making more money and not having that deficit, so that we don't have to close it, God forbid, I think that's the way to go.
Madam Chair, um, I wouldn't assume that we would be able to make it for the season's opening.
No, 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 of course not, but at the same time, if we don't do it now, we're waiting a whole nother year.
But I think that there's discussion about the um, the forty thousand for the engineering, which I think is a great start.
Yeah, I would figure you would approve the engineering at least.
Yeah, and get that going.
For the parking lot and for, for this one. Um, while I'm here, any chance? We can discuss the security issue. I had sent you all um, a bid on the trench digging. Uh, we had tabled last time, you had tabled last time until I got that information.
Did you, did we have it in our packet?
I think it was a two-part table, Madam Chair. There was one, we were missing the trenching numbers, and then Member Candito had said, that's such a small project.
Right.
That's one that would be like, ready to go if some of these larger ones fail and we get closer to the end of the year.
And I'd like to discuss that if you got to that point.
So, do we have, I mean, I know that there were some emails, but it wasn't in our packet, so I can't recall any of that.
I have a quote here. Um, I'll tell you what I did after I, that was off at the Malte. We went down to see where the trench would be dug, where the conduit would be buried. It's eighty feet from the Parks building to the um, maintenance building to the pole. We're gonna do a twenty-four inch deep trench, even though for CAT five, minimum you can use is eighteen, which is fine. I mean, it's the reason is, is it is covered and there's not gonna be freezing on that, so it's not a water pipe. So, we discussed that, um, so we got a price of twelve fifty on top of the price of twenty-two, two fifty-six. And my concern is, one, it's gotta go up to RFP, two is, I'm down here every day, the place is mopped, okay? Weekends, we have a lot of mom groups who are here. I'm very concerned about this security. I mean, as far as, we got a half a million dollar investment here, we've already had two incidents at the playground. Someone tried to disassemble one of the pieces, and another one, there was some physical graffiti, and before that, we had a hit and run on the fence, soccer fence, and someone smashed into it, smashed the bench and took off. Luckily, the police departments did. But, putting that aside, my major concern is the amount of children we have here. With all these people, I'm just, you know, less than one percent, whatever you wanna call, I'm just concerned about. If anything happens, traffic, if, God forbid, child gets lost, anything like that, I think twenty-four thousand is very, very short money to.
So we, hold on, so we had talked about this at the last meeting, that it was a priority of ours, and that we just needed additional.
Yeah.
So if that rounds it up, then I would just request that um, that come back to us as a full package and what we need to vote on for the.
Well, um, it, it.
Cause I'm not ready to vote on that um tonight, but I know that I'm ready to.
You do have the full package, though. You have this quote, which is what would be our price, and then you have this.
Okay.
So I'm not quite sure, it's gonna be by two different vendors, so it's not like.
That's mine.
My question for you was, when did you go out with um Mr. Maltese? Is this recent?
Three weeks ago, two weeks ago.
Three weeks ago, okay.
So it was after the meeting?
It was, no, it was after the meeting.
Okay.
I had grabbed him, he was happy to go, but it's, I, I don't, I really don't wanna wait. I mean, I'd like to get an answer because we're gonna have to wait, and this place was packed. And I'm, I'm just thinking that, of course, I'm Parks Department, I just think even as a citizen, with all these kids down here, I think we need the coverage. And it goes right to the police department, and it's gonna make uh, Snowa asleep better.
Second front?
What's up?
That it goes right to the police department?
Oh, yeah.
That's a hundred percent.
It's all monitored by the police twenty-four seven.
Do you have security?
What level of monitoring they'll do?
Yeah.
Do you have security camera signs?
Signs?
Yeah, but that's, the idea is also, once we get up, we're gonna put, people know that they're being watched by the police department, so maybe they'll think twice. The other ones are for the North Fields, which is different.
So, I don't have that information in front of me, so I don't know what I'm voting on. Or would be even voting on.
I can make a copy for you over here.
Madam Chair, as much as I would, you know me, I'm the first person to advocate for any technology improvements. But again, I think this is a fantastic one that we can slide in, once we understand if these bigger projects are gonna become ineligible, take too long, whatever the case might be.
I, I try and understand your reasoning, because I understand the big project, but this is twenty-four thousand for the protection of Ted Williams, which is the most heavily attended park that we have here, so are you waiting to see if we have any money left or whatever? Because this should be done soon as possible, just to me, because it's, you know, the, getting it done in January means nothing to me. Getting it done in November doesn't mean anything. This should be done during the summer, when it's packed here, and there's a lot of going on, so I could understand if it was a lot of money, but this is, this is less than the security system at the Gazzino.
This is the first push we've had on this, this hard. I've said my piece, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
So the twenty-six.
I did push it last time.
So the twenty-six thousand dollars that we had discussed before that we put on hold because we were looking for additional information, and that's what we received, but we didn't receive it because I don't have it in front of me, but um, so that's, and now you're saying it's only twenty-four thousand?
It's twenty-two, two fifty-six plus twelve fifty. It was always twenty-two, two fifty-six. I didn't know what the trench number is, which is twelve fifty. So you have those bids in here, they're done by a different vendor.
So even if we voted on this, it still has to get um, it has to go through the, the portal and be approved, so we don't even know if this is
Right.
um, approved.
And that's part of the time element I'm talking about.
Right.
If it doesn't get approved, great, but if it does, then we can start calling.
And, and this is a project that we could easily fit in the capital plan, as opposed to some of these other ones. It doesn't make it any less important, it's just the strategy.
Right, right. Well, that's good.
What, what year capital?
We haven't voted RFP twenty-five yet, but we have.
But we already submitted our capital park for fifteen grand for the water line.
So water was more important than security of children?
No, don't even think about that. That is so long.
Okay, we.
We had never thought about.
I'm gonna pull this in. I'm going to say that.
I don't know what your problem is with that.
Excuse me, excuse me. We know that the security system is important for Ted Williams. If this can hold until we get everything on, we'll put it on the twenty, on the third, because we're gonna be revisiting ARPA every single meeting until we have no money left. So let's make sure that we have all of us have all that information.
Robert, do you need anything else from me before I do those two bids? Those two quotes, that should cover it.
Yeah.
Okay.
When's your next meeting?
June third.
I don't see you here.
Tracy, would you please add?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Arthur, till the next meeting. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, very much.
Um, Madam Chair, Mr. Day, I saw more. I, I saw more than the three, like, did you?
Um, well, the three with the more recent one, my longer list that was submitted was then tore apart at a Parks meeting, so I don't wanna revisit that right now.
Got it. Because do we have anything else of any other of the members?
Um, before he leaves, Mike? Mike? What's the timetable for putting in the security system, once it's approved or if it's approved?
Well, it has to go up to RFP, and then once it gets approved by Tracy, then we'll, we'll give them the timeline, hey, we need this done in three weeks or four weeks, so.
Okay.
So you're talking another probably month after it gets approved.
Right.
So that's my issue, and that's why I wanna get it, it has to go through the portal, then the RFP, and then when they can do it. Cause they have to order the equipment. So we're talking, best case in the area, August, but that's why.
The end of the season.
That's why I wanna.
Okay.
Do that.
Thank you.
Alright.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just in case you haven't noticed, Mr. Smith.
I see, Mr. Smith. I was going to wave behind all the heads that were in front of him at that one point, but yes, I do see that. Are we, any other discussion on the ARPA?
Just one point. Um, can, if we have any projects, can we just bring them again forward to make sure that everything that we've thought of is listed down? Um, and then, you know, we can kinda look at the priorities again one more time, and then winnow it down a little bit more?
That would be very helpful. You had given us a really good list at the beginning of the budget, um, cycle discussions with the department heads. Um, I'd like to bring that back. Yeah, that type of um list.
And only the ones that you think will be viable, like, you know, not like, you know, the list, the wish lists, but the things that.
So that's what Christina is, uh, hopefully in the next couple of days will get more clarification.
Great, okay. That would be helpful.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I would, I would caution you against approving um, like parks or. I would just, I would caution you against approving any parks or paving projects tonight until we get some further clarification, because it's, it's looking at least on the county side so far, like neither of them are really eligible.
Do you know if North Fields went through direct or county?
Um, so I think the North Fields went through the county, but it, they were approved under revenue replacement, and the pot of revenue replacement is, I mean, I, you know, I suppose, you know, it's certainly the board's prerogative with, you know, with, with Bob to um, you know, you could pull some projects out of revenue replacement, decide to pay for them another way. Um, but that pot is mostly dedicated at this point, yeah.
Does anybody know what, how they define revenue replacement?
Yeah, so the, the county assigned each community a number of revenue replacement dollars, and I think Lakeville was somewhere around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenue replacement projects. Those, if you funded a project under revenue replacement, it gave you more flexibility.
Right.
But we're at that max.
Okay.
Cause Madam Chair, it feels like if anybody had a revenue problem during COVID, it was parks, because they couldn't open.
Right.
Yeah.
So. Yes, um, so I, with revenue, so the one, the advantage of using revenue replacement for a lot of these projects is that it is the, it is literally the only category that you don't have to tie directly back to COVID. Um, so all of the other categories, you have to be able to make the case that COVID sort of disproportionately affected this specific population of people, and this is how you're going to address sort of alleviating some of that. Um, with revenue replacement, there doesn't really have to be any justification, which is how we were able to do the, the park projects that we've done so far. Yeah.
Thank you. ARPA budget, what else is coming on every meeting? Love it. Okay, so, um, who has the bigger point? Our HR director or Johnny Bissinett? Cause I know that they're both gonna warrant some discussion here, so.
Paper, scissors, shake.
How about we go through our um, two policies, and then we'll go right to Donnie, okay? So, thirteen, um, second viewing of the possible vote on the employee meal breaks. Um, do you please join us? Um, Lacey Marshall, our HR director, who's been sitting in the corner patiently waiting for us. So I had requested that we um, put this on the, the previous agenda as a first viewing. Um, it is back in front of us as a second viewing and vote as a policy, so, please.
Hello. Uh, it's again the, that Mass General Law, chapter one forty-nine, section one hundred, that speaks to for every six hours worked, the employee is eligible for a thirty-minute break. So the determination is whether the town wants to have that, a paid meal break or a non-paid meal break, if it's mandated, if it's not mandated. If it's mandated, then we need to shut down the building for that half hour or hour, whatever the town would decide. A half hour is what is by law, and then if not, you can unmandate it, which then means if the employee chooses to stay in place and not leave the workplace to get a meal, they would be paid for that time. And then there's the last one, which kinda makes no sense, but I wanted to make sure all the options were there, which is the unmade, unmandated paid meal break, which means either way, they would be paid for the, the meal break. Brian had mentioned last time, which in every company I know of, you can't say, I'm gonna take my meal break at four thirty because I work till five. It has to be taken within the actual working hours of the day and not to leave and not come back. So the lunch break would need to be, you leave the workplace if you want to, but you also have to return to the workplace, and that's part of the deal.
We used to call it eight and skate.
Yes. And then, along with that, I think building the policy is to ensure that there is coverage, so that if an office that has three individuals wants to take a lunch break, not all three of them are out and were shutting down that office. If we're not saying that it's a mandated shutdown as well.
If I may, how would one B work then? So employees choosing to stay or to work or stay at the workplace must be paid for their time.
Right.
So how do they not end up shortening their workday?
Right. Say, say that again.
So option B, unmandated unpaid meal break. Employees choosing to leave for thirty minutes will not be paid for that time. Employees choosing to work or stay at the workplace during that meal break must be paid for their time.
Right.
So.
So if you, it's basically what, it's basically what's happening right now. So our employees work either a seven thirty to four thirty, or they work in eight to five. And so it's a nine-hour day, Monday through Thursday, and then it's a four-hour day, eight to twelve on Friday. So there's your forty hours. Because everybody sits at their desk to eat lunch. Uh, if you did it this way, anybody that chooses to leave for that half hour, because we do have a couple of people, myself included, I go to my house and grab something to eat, it's considered a non-paid break, and then you would need to make up that half hour or just not be paid for it.
But how then, the second half of that, the people that choose to stay, how does that not just shorten their day by a half hour?
It doesn't. So that's why I'm saying, right now, pretty much every employee you have is working that, they're working forty hours, because they're doing nine hours, and then they're doing the four hours, and all of them are choosing right now to stay at their desk. So an un, an unmandated unpaid is technically what we're, we're doing.
My, my concern, Madam Chair, would be that option, while it looks enticing, does that then essentially make it to say, well, I chose to stay? I didn't want the lunch break, so either let me go early or pay me the OT. Cause your policy says if I choose not to have my break.
But I think what Lacey's saying too is that the work week is forty hours, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's not forty-two and a half hours.
Right.
So if it were forty-two and a half hours, they would get paid for the forty, but they would be taking their lunch. So in this case, if the forty, they're working forty-two and a half hours, basically.
So they're choosing to work for two hours or three.
So would we?
I'm sorry, say that.
I'm not gonna say that again, because I probably said it wrong.
Cause that's, do you? Do you have a recommendation or a general consensus of which one would be preferred?
I believe that the town has adopted, without being in a policy, that it's a thirty-minute unpaid break.
So B is the most enticing one?
Yes, because B does not incur us to extend our work hours by anything else. What I'm saying is, if you tell, if you, if you tell an hourly employee, if you take a hot, half-hour lunch break outside of the workplace, you then need to either not get paid for that half hour, or you need to stay a half hour. That's kind of the way that it is working right now.
But we just don't have a vote.
We just don't have a policy in place to say that, so when I'm in processing or onboarding right now, the letter says you got hired for a full-time position, the town hours of these hours, your department head will determine, you know, what your forty-hour work week looks like. But then it's not followed by, meal breaks are for thirty minutes. If you stay in place, you will be paid. If you decide to leave, it's unpaid.
Okay, but there's no overtime involved or anything?
No.
Okay.
Not B?
Yeah.
Good?
Chair?
Yeah.
B's my favorite, except I feel like it leaves liability, the way it's worded.
I think, yeah, I don't, I think you're reading into it. I think, yeah, I don't, I think you're reading into it a little too much. I don't mean it in a bad way, it's just, yeah.
I just don't see how that wouldn't be like, okay, well, you're paying me for the lunch break, I'm not taking, so I'm clocking out at thirty minutes before.
So that's why I said when you write into the policy, that it would need to say that your lunch break, if you choose to leave, needs to begin and end at the workplace. So what you're saying is, you can go for the thirty minutes, but you need to come back here in order for us to know that you took.
But that's for the ones that chose to take it. What about the ones that choose not to take?
Then they get paid their regular forty hours.
Okay.
So a prime example is Tracy. Tracy does a, technically, she's in the building for thirty-two hours, but her work week is thirty-six because she comes in at nine, she works till noon, she comes back at one, she works till five. So because she's taking that hour break, the thirty-six hours becomes thirty-two hours because it's in, it's a unpaid break and she's leaving. Um, we have another employee that goes home every day for lunch. So instead of her work week being forty hours, her work week is essentially thirty-eight hours and she gets paid for thirty-eight hours. So what I'm saying is it's, it's really already in practice, there's just no policy that says that. And and the concern was, well, if I, if I decide to stay and eat, then I get paid. I didn't, you know, I didn't know that, so I just leave and and take the thirty minutes, cause I figured either way, I wasn't gonna get paid for it.
So I have a question. Um, this applies to every town employee?
So union, labor union has their own contract that states in their, um, they actually implemented the fifteen-minute in-place uh for the DPW, this is for the DPW people, a fifteen-minute in-place break. And then again, fire has their own contract and uh police have their own contract. So kind of pushing them out, because it's it's really not relative to that. This is more so your, your town hall, your senior center, your library and the building department.
Okay, so I don't know how we ask department heads who work on their time at home to abide by such a policy. Cause we know department heads like work, maybe working at home. Um, and they do, many cases. So I'm really wondering exactly how many people are affected. And sometimes I feel like department heads are able to manage their meal breaks without a formal policy, I guess is my point. Right, but I think that that's more for, we're talking more for a non-exempt, correct?
Yes, you're not talking about salaried employees, you're talking about hourly.
So how many people are we talking about exactly? Well, not exactly, roughly.
Thank you, that's much easier to.
Yeah, and and I guess my point is, it really isn't all a couple hundred people that work for the town or however many.
No.
It's a handful of people and I feel like a department head knows their department.
The reason that I am trying to put this in place is because it is a law. The meal break is a law, it's it's one forty-nine, chapter one hundred. In the, the town should say, okay, based off of this law, we're giving you an unmandated unpaid. Because I know certain cities that have a mandated one hour where they shut down their town hall and their employees have to go get lunch and and it extends their workday by an hour. So they work every day, eight to five, because they take that hour lunch break, but it's mandated. It's right there when you come in and you sign the contract, you know, I'll be working forty hours, a mandated one-hour lunch break. Usually the hours of operation, so it's very well spelled out. The problem that in in our employees are fabulous. So i- it's kind of, you know, one of those things where it's like, yeah, do we really need the policy? Uh, I think it covers us because if you do have an employee that goes, well, I left for a half an hour, there's nothing that says that I can't, I left for an hour today, there's no policy that says I have to be here for lunch or don't have to be here for lunch, or it's paid, it's unpaid, it's mandated, it's unmandated. So this just gives that, hey, we acknowledge that there's a law and the town has decided based off that law, this is how we're going to present the policy.
So if that's the case, I still would like to see a policy that allows the department head to, on occasion, you know, like if I say, oh, I have a wake to go to, can I not take my lunch and leave at four thirty? Let the department head say, okay.
So the, so the, so there's a difference i- in my opinion between creating a policy and then how that policy is then presented. So as a department head, if you give me a policy, I'm gonna read it, I'm gonna understand it, I'm going to digest it. How I apply it then to my coworker is based on my judgment. So again, if if my coworker said, hey, I need to leave a half hour early, I'm not taking lunch. Hey, great, now if that happened every single day, I'd be like, okay, you, you know, one, one time, two times, whatever. But creating the policy and then allowing the department head the ability to apply it the way they see fit.
That's just what I, I wanna be sure.
Like, we're not saying, hey, this is the policy and you must.
Yeah.
But it's, hey, this is the policy, it's a thirty-minute meal break, it's unpaid, it's unmandated. That gives the department head the flexibility to then.
Right.
That's, that's what I'm saying, I just want that to be reflected.
I feel like Leah's concern comes back to something that has been, we've never really addressed it, which is like, are employees eligible for flex time or not? Like, I think it kind of falls under that bucket a little more, where like, maybe that's where the discretion comes in. This department says, yeah, you can take off an hour, tomorrow, make it up over the next two days or whatever the case might be. Look to you to tell us if we're silly for considering that kind of thing. But that's something that I've, I've heard the board talk about a number of times over the year, but never really come to a conclusion.
But this, and I wanna make sure that we follow up on that too, because that is, um, that I remember that coming up in discussion too. Um, is this, is this board ready to make a vote on this this evening? If not, it's gonna come back for the third viewing.
I'm ready.
So make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept option B of unmandated unpaid meal break.
I have a motion in a second, discussion please.
I just want it reflected that department head has the ability to, you know, on occasion or whatever the wording.
Use best judgment.
Use best judgment.
And this is a vote just to give the human uh human resource director the direction, right? It doesn't, it's not the actual policy, cause we will get to vote on the actual policy, right?
Right, cause it's gonna be in the handbook.
Yeah.
I, yeah, my understanding was this was the policy, because that would just be updated language.
Right, it's going into the handbook.
Are they clocking in or out or recording it some way?
So our hourly employees do a worksheet that says the hours that they were uh in the office, yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, and uh, roll call vote please.
Davy and I.
Johnny Hugh, aye.
Carboni, aye.
Candy, don't aye.
They aye.
Okay, um, the access card policy is back in front of us um for the second viewing. We had quite a few comments um and suggestions. And I believe our HR director had taken the time to institute some of that in here. Could you please highlight it for us, please?
I will, so the big ones were, a concern that we had was, it had stated about the policy and then signing the agreement. So I've integrated at the top where it says policy slash user agreement, cause this is the policy in the user agreement rolled into one. In the sentence that said, my acceptance of this agreement indicates that I have read and understood the below identification access card policy and agree to adhere to the protocol and procedures established for the door access cards. So I added in that uh verbiage to say the below, to understand that that is a actual policy that they're agreeing to. Uh, I addressed Brian's concern, which was the tailgating, and then also addressed.
Who was that? I missed it.
So.
I was looking for red, I apologize.
Yeah, we can't get that in black and white documents.
Oh, sorry, okay, so.
Oh, Tracy's gonna knock, yeah, Tracy's gonna take you out now.
So the. So, so number two, I stand that, I understand that the door access card is issued in my name as the sole authorized person for access to the appropriate areas of the town. I will not allow any other person to use my card, nor will I allow any other employee to enter without using their card, i.e. tailgating, holding the door open.
Thank you, I only looked for the red text, so I didn't even see that.
Not a problem. I also then added in.
What else is hiding in there?
Number three, I also, is in addition, I understand the doors will remain closed at all times and not propped open to allow individuals to bypass the system. That was another addition that we had spoken about. Everything else remained the same, the card fee is the five fifty, that is based off of what we're being charged right now and it allows the select board to make that decision. So it would be me coming to you and saying, Lacey's lost three cards at this point, are we going to have her, you know, pay for it? And then below, we talked about that disciplinary action. So I did put it in there, you know, that it would result in confiscation, but disciplinary action will also be taken in accordance with town, police or fire agreements because we are issuing it to the police and the fire and they have their own policies. I have sent this to both of them to review, based off of if they wanted to adopt it or if they wanted to adopt their own policy. So they have a copy of it just for their, you know, their viewing.
And just um for the purposes of our our viewers um at home, cause I know that they um they're watching, uh, that the operations for, that we're already providing resident services will remain open during the day, so that those services can continue. This is for after-hours or certain areas of the building that would not be public access, correct? Okay.
So remain closed uh at all times is the fire department. Those are, those doors are locked. The town hall front office, not the employee entrance, which is in the back, the front one opens at eight o'clock and automatically shuts at four thirty. The town hall side right now is opening at nine and closes at five. So that, it's on a timer, they go, they unlock automatically and then they also lock automatically. Now, you can get out, it's not like it's locked you into the building, uh, it's just, it's locked so that you can't.
Who do we report anomalies to for that system? Is that you or Paul McNally or, cause I came in the other day and the select board was locked during business hours.
So that is myself and Paul me.
Okay, alright, thanks.
And does this take into account um holidays? Is it programmed?
So the good thing about the system is, once it, once everybody has a key card and it comes online, the only way the doors will unlock is if somebody swipes it, because it tells the door that there's somebody in the building. So if a snow day were to occur and nobody's in the building, the door senses that nobody's logged into the building, so no doors will unlock.
Right, but if you go in and it's a snow day, because you had to get something out of your office and you're up there by yourself, that door's unlocked?
Yep, it'll trigger it.
Yeah, or custodian comes to get a snow shovel.
Yeah. Not on, so not on like a Saturday or Sunday, not after hours. But if I, if I swipe it at seven fifty-five and that door is set, cause right now it's set to open at eight from Monday to uh Thursday and then, I, um, sorry, eight to four thirty on Monday through Thursday and then the eight to twelve, if I swipe that eight, seven fifty-five and I'm like, oh, I just gotta run and grab this and then I walk out the door, it thinks that I'm still in the building.
So is the solution to that, that you do an override?
I can do an override, and I can do an override from my house as well.
Okay, as long as that's accounted for, cause that's the problem.
Like when the building is open?
Yeah.
One other question, Madam, how do, what's our, I'm not looking for it in the policy, this is employees. What, what's our procedure for vendors and such when they're on-site to do work?
So the good thing about this is if a vendor is coming on-site off off-time, there's a access, you can grant an access for the day, which is on their, on their mobile device and they, they scan in. You can also set it that it's only for certain hours. So if you're saying a vendor's coming in between this time and this time, it allows them access. If it's a last-minute emergency, the, again, it's, it's Paul that has, you know, the, the access as well, is they would call us and if they're standing at the door, then we could hit the button and it would unlock for them. And as soon as they shut it, it would walk behind them.
Do, do we consider at all getting, like, places I've been will have like a vendor, like, five or six vendor cards that they sign up for the day and return at the end of the, the business day or?
We can do that as well.
Cause otherwise, some of them might be going in and out, in and out, and they're failing to get parts and whatnot.
Right.
Yeah.
The constant downstairs bathroom issues.
And that's like, that's, I think the, the next kind of discussion is, who outside of the employees are we looking to grant access to the cards? I would assume you all want cards, do we, is every board getting a card? Who's getting, who gets a card? Do you get a card?
So let's um, let's table that discussion, let's vote on this whole policy at the moment. That's in front of us, cause we will have to go through that.
Okay.
Uh, I'll make the motion to accept the town of Lakeville door access card policy and user acceptance agreement as presented on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second, motion to second, discussion?
So I know you said as written, um, but in number four, would it be worth adding, I will not duplicate or replicate the card?
How would you?
Well, there's ways.
There is?
There is actually ways, yes, absolutely.
Cheap ways.
I agree.
Okay, so other than that, I think it's good.
Alright, so you'll add that.
That's your problem, devious.
So there'll be one addition on there. Everybody got that?
Yeah.
Alright, um, would you please make sure that there's a spot on here, Lacey, that the, um, when it was approved?
Yes.
The date. I wanna try to create some consistency, um, or hope to move on that way, consistency. Alright, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote please, Davy and I.
Johnny Hugh, aye.
Carboni, aye.
Candy, don't aye.
They aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have one quick question. So like tonight, I was overloaded with, you know, gear and purse and sweater. Does that mean like, if someone holds the door open for me at work because I'm, you know, loaded down with stuff, that we're gonna get in trouble for that?
Absolutely. Yep, you're gonna have to.
Is it that easy?
You'll have to make multiple trips.
Um, cause you know, like, I have to use like the handicapped, you know, things to get in here. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, there are gonna be, you know, logical exceptions.
The reason I put that up with, I had mentioned it for tailgating and such last time, is twofold. One, security, you want some of it should be in there, but two is also for personnel safety. So hopefully Lacey or fire chief or somebody can know like, hey, when the alarm is pulled, this, these employees were in the building, it's account for their safety.
Right.
So, like, I totally get what you're saying.
I mean, I don't wanna have to unload all my stuff to swipe a card and then pick it all up again and then try to open the door.
So you actually don't, the good thing is, when you've got seven thousand bags in your hand plus a cup of coffee, I don't know, cookies, doughnuts, whatever, you just wave your arm, as long as the card is in your pocket, it re, all you have to do is swipe in front of it, you don't have to physically hold your card in front of it. We've made, the, the way the system is designed, and I can tweak it either way, is it goes by, it, it actually reads the card, it senses that you're near the door and it automatically unlocks it. So you don't have to worry, it's, you don't have to pull, pull out your card, that's the nice part. You just kind of move your arm in front of the door, automatically unlocks and, and you're good.
Click the mouse quick.
Okay, we're done, you're done, thank you.
Done, thank you.
And I'm gonna recuse myself. I'm the Gillian Drive, cause I'm out of butter, just gonna recuse myself.
You don't have to leave the room.
But I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay, um, why don't you, why don't you come on up, just in case we have any questions for you?
Thanks for hanging out for the night with us.
Thank you, Donny. Um, address with, um, Scotty Bissinette for the record and your address.
Um, on Holly Hill Lane.
Holly Hill Lane.
Yep.
Okay, in front of us this evening is a request, um, this was on our previous agenda, but um we moved to this agenda. So we've got a request from Donald Bissinette for the town to accept Gillian Drive um as a public way.
Attached is the roadway plans, a letter, and, um, the, you know, the letter request and, and the plans, and a letter from, um, our director, our DPW director, that there were three, um, observations on this letter, um, since addressed by the developer. Based on the completion of the peer review, the DPW does give recommendation of approval for the acceptance of this, which is a requirement, um, in order for the select board to, um, enter into this approval. So once the select board does vote this layout, um, the plan is officially forwarded to the planning board. At that point, they would go through it for their approval. They have forty-five days in which to report back to the select board if there's any findings or any concerns. Once we have the planning board approval, the board will vote to approve and adopt the layout. If the planning board does not approve their request, the select board will not proceed. So there's a timeline. So this is, this request is coming in front of us for, um, a vote, and this would go on to the fall town meeting, should it be approved by all parties. Did I say that okay?
Did you?
I think so.
For me?
In layman's terms, what's the purpose? Why are we doing this?
Because the developer, okay, the developer comes in with a plan for subdivision. They own that property, they own the road. They will continue to own the road unless they decide they would like the town to accept it. And once it becomes a town road, then it becomes our responsibility. But there's a process in which to get there, and there's a protection of liability for the town. So the developer, who owns the road, has to make sure that there's proper drainage, that the road is laid out appropriately, based on, uh, regulations. There's a certain, you know, curbing thickness, um, radius for, um, fire apparatuses, this was all the, the original plan, but, um, so the town does not want to own a bad road that we have to maintain in going forward. Yep.
Go ahead.
Once we, once town meeting approves it, then the responsibility is on the town to take care of the road. Another thing, which, there's varying reasons why yes or no, but in general, the school buses try to stick to town roads. They sometimes have reasons why they will go down not town roads, which usually are, you know, um, private, you know, whatever reasons, but, um, you know, plus, right now, I assume you plow it, because it's not a town road, so we don't plow it yet. But once we accept it, then we have to accommodate for plowing for the road as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
No, sure, one, one question I did have is, isn't this road, like, thirteen years old? Why, why now? Is there any background on that, or am I mistaken in how old this road actually is?
Good question for you.
Yeah, I can answer that. It is old, that old. And, um, the original, um, contractor that I hired to build the road took some shortcuts, I guess he, whoops, got cramp on my leg. Must do.
Oh, yeah, we're feeling it.
Been sitting too long. And, uh, so I had to have it done over again in order to make it right. So it just, it, it takes time and it takes a lot of money. So that's the reason.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I mean, it's just a long time. And how far, how long ago was the, did you have to redo everything? Was it the, the things that just happened now, or was there another large project?
I actually had it, um, re, redone two years ago, I think it is, it might be three now, but where, where it entailed, um, taking up some of the asphalt that, um, had cracked and settled and stuff, and had that all removed, and, and, um, better gravel brought in and made it right.
If I'm not mistaken, it's two years, right, from the time that the road, um, from the, the last layer goes on, and has to settle for two years or something before, I don't know, maybe I'm, I'm trying to, I'm reaching deep here because of, you know.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, uh, it has to, well, at least I believe, things keep changing, so, um, that's why I'm sitting here, to make sure I can follow the process here. After the top coat is on, I believe, that it needs to, uh, set for a period of time to ensure the town or whoever, that it's, you know, it's gonna stay in time.
And maybe that's what I should have said, a period of time, so.
Plus, it is, you know, a long process, and even though you're on it, you could miss a deadline, and there's only two town meetings.
Oh, yeah, believe me, I, I've missed some deadlines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know two years ago, we were trying to get it, but we missed, you know, we were working on it with a former town planner, and we tried and tried, but, you know, yeah, it just didn't.
I'm just concerned that there's a precedent being set. I mean, this one sounds like it's got some legitimate reasons why, but I wouldn't want other, if you look at an actual map of Lakeville, the number of private roads in town are significant. And I'm concerned that suddenly people start saying, oh, they're willing to take older roads, and they might not be as well taken care of or as well constructed, thankfully we can do the peer review process.
Well, I think that you already, the town is already holding some of my money and has been for a long time now.
Yeah, that's, you probably set up, you know, understanding that once you did everything that was asked, that it would go through.
Well, right, when, um, the DPW director comes out, and he brings, uh, independent engineering company to go over things with him, to make sure that everything is right, then what difference would it make if the road was two years old, three, four, five years old?
I, I, I just wasn't here when this process started, so I'm not judging why they decided to go down it, but I feel like those are things that hopefully are being taken into consideration. I don't, I don't know when this process started.
Yep.
And I, I think that any, um, when a subdivision comes in, I do believe that they do hold money specifically for the roads. And then, once it's completely, um, it becomes a public road, then you could put in a request to the planning board to release the funds.
Yep.
But it has to go through the complete cycle.
I answered Brenna's question earlier, it does not really benefit to the town, because we take over all maintenance operations and such.
Yep.
This one's a small road, so students can easily get to the other end.
Honestly, Brian, uh, in the past, some of the most well-attended meetings were the, when people were putting in to get streets adopted, because they're in, in specifically in the town of Lakeville, you must remember, tons of people would come out just to vote it down, because it would cost more money. But I think, you know, now we know that it's in our best interest to provide, you know, good roads for the school buses and the kids and, you know, but.
Oh.
Costs more money.
This isn't my first road in town either, or in Massachusetts for that matter, you know, um, I built roads from Martha's Vineyard and Middleborough and Lakeville, and, um, and I've had them all approved.
Yep.
And, um.
But traditionally in Lakeville, there was a group that would come out just to vote it, they didn't care.
No.
They didn't care how well the road was made, because they just said, no. So we've gotten away from that, you know, and, I mean, that's a nice road, you know, it's, you know.
So I make a motion to accept, what is it, accept the notice seven ten, or accept it as a?
To lay out, I motioned to lay out, um, Julian Drive.
Julian Drive. Um, I make the motion to lay out Julian Drive.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Here, you're not?
Well, I think some of the concerns that we have where it sets a precedent and things, that'll be up to whoever's on the board at that time, and then town meeting.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, uh, vote by roll, please.
Uh, Fabian I.
Donahue I.
Carboni I.
Dave Stein.
Okay, so we have the motion carries.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, so, um, we'll do what, this is gonna go, Tracy, you know what's gonna happen now, right? This is what the planning board.
Yes.
Are approved, okay.
Thank you so much.
Moving forward, there is a letter that has to get sent out to all the butters, notifying them when we do hold the public hearing.
Yep, so, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you, Don.
Have a good night.
You too.
Alright, would you, um, let Maureen know that she can scoot back in? I'm, I'm moving right along.
She's in the middle of an interview, it looks like.
Okay, so number fifteen, discuss impossible vote to authorize the interim town administrator to establish employment contracts with department heads. Mr. News, you're up.
Thank you, madam chair. As you all know, there are, um, four department heads who have contracts, police chief, fire chief, library director, and the treasurer collector. Uh, and talking to, uh, other department heads, um, a majority would like, um, the town to enter into a contract, uh, with them, and, uh, obviously working in partnership with the human resources director. Um, I think it would be good for the town if we establish contracts for the department heads who do not have a contract. I mean, we're not, obviously, there's the cost of living increase, and the ben, benefits are pretty standard, so it's not going to be, you know, additional cost to the town. I think it just kind of treats them professionally, and, uh, I think gives them some, some support and some security.
Is there, um, any mass general law, um, that would regulate this in any way?
So I did reach out to town council today, and, uh, there is no mass general law that would impact, uh, these contracts of the various department heads that do not have them. And he recommends that we enter into a three-year contract.
So that, okay. Alright, board, questions?
How many department heads do not have a contract right now? Or, I'm sorry, how many?
How many do, uh, I can, four have a contract, and the remainder don't.
Which is?
Uh, probably eight or so.
Eight, nine, somewhere around there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it doesn't change job description?
Correct.
It's nothing, just?
Yep.
Yeah.
And obviously, they'll be presented to the board. I mean, I'll sit with Lacey, and obviously, there are contracts in place that will follow, so.
Did you not get this, Tom? Fifteen?
No. It might have been, it was single page, so it might have been attached.
It'd be stuck. It'd be stuck. Okay. Okay, anybody who'd like to make a motion on this?
Question, so fire, police, treasurer collector, library director have theirs, but they're all kind of staggered right now.
Yeah.
With the intent to be, get the other number all locked into the same period of time? Or would there be some picking of bingo balls to say, you get one year, two year, three, just to?
I think we'd want it to be consistent.
You never want to do them all at the same time, though, that'd be negotiating everyone at the same time.
It makes it like a department head union at that point.
Yeah, some, some to think about. Well, uh, Lacey and I have chat.
Yeah, and I have one, um, for raises, um, currently, it's.
Yeah, it's cost of living.
Yeah, it's cost of living, so that would be standard in all the contracts.
I believe it would be, yes. Yep.
Unless there's some outside action taken by us.
Yes, exactly.
So I would just ask that we would maybe hold off until we make sure that we had everything level set correctly, if we are gonna work from the, uh, from the, from the study, that we make sure that wherever we're working for the study, uh, we're incorporating all of them.
Sorry, one second. Does this include the town clerk? Because the town clerk is elected.
No, it's elected, she's an elected position.
She has a contract with the town.
She does, she does.
If that changed to an appointed position, how would it count?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. They all want to sit in.
Uh, I'll make a motion to authorize the interim town administrator to establish employment contracts with department heads who are currently lacking them and present them to the select board.
Second. Motion and a second, further discussion?
I'm very happy to see this here, I'll forgive you.
I do believe a couple folks had come forward, but the request never made it to the select board, so I'm happy to see this.
I think it's a, it's a move forward to a, a respectful discourse between the department heads and the board and the town administrator. Agree.
Excellent. Okay, vote by roll, please.
Uh, Fabian I.
Donahue I.
Carboni I.
Andy Dwyer.
They are.
Thank you.
Alright, passes. Alright, let's talk about, um, and vote on the award for transportation services contract for Norfolk County Agricultural High School. So the bid, solicited bids for the transportation services going, um, for Norfolk County, Norfolk Aggie, um, attaches the bid summary, um, that was prepared for the three bids received. The lower bidder is Taunton Motorized Coach. So there is a, a motion here that, um, would authorize the Norfolk County Agricultural High School to, um, Taunton Motorized Coach at a daily rate of twenty, two hundred fifty dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So I make a motion to award the bid for transportation services to Norfolk County Agricultural High School, the Taunton Motorized Coach at a daily rate of two fifty for the year twenty twenty-five, twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Alright, motion?
Second, with discussion?
Yep. And there's a second and discussion.
Thank you for being able to bid this out. Um, I think everyone knows, I think I cried, like, I, I'm like, what? Uh, when I saw the number that we were quoted, um, I, I was beside myself to, to think that that was going to be, you know, part of our budget. Um, and especially the impact of such a, you know, seventy thousand dollars is, um, for transportation for one student. It, it's prohibitive, um, so much thank you there. My question is, I, I see one of the bidders on there is the current.
Yes.
Um, school contracts.
Yes.
For our school. Um, how were we able to bid that under us instead of having the school bid it? That's my question.
Todd and I made a decision to do it.
Okay.
Uh, Todd reached out to all the business managers, um, and we decided to do it. This will result in a savings. Uh, so we're still waiting on the Bristol Aggie. Uh, we did solicit votes for Bristol Aggie. Uh, and I'm not quite sure when that, the timeframe, this is probably up right now, I don't know. So Todd will be working on that as well.
Yeah.
And we'll come back, probably at the next meeting.
Excellent. Madam Chair, I would like to make a suggestion for a later meeting, that we have this as a policy, that this is something that we do ongoing, um, because I know, looking at that extra eighteen thousand that we had to put in, um, for a contract we didn't write, um, from last August, and then seeing this, this is somewhere where we can save real money. This is not, like, small bills, this is real money every year out of the operating budget.
Yep.
We have our policy, um, duo. From our goals, and I think we'll draft or put together a really awesome.
Yeah, I'm very happy to see this number go down. Well, I get to be about half, but, yeah.
It's a start.
Yeah.
Uh, roll a vote, please.
Fabian I.
Donahue I.
Carboni I.
Andy Dwyer.
They are.
Alright, also in front of us is a, which we have to bid on, we have to vote on this every year, to award Southeastern Regional Services, which is also known as Surgis, group paper contract to WB Mason. The bid, um, went out to bid for paper, and the only bid received was from WB Mason. Uh, attached is the price list, somewhere, there it is. So there is a, a motion that we would need, um, to award this to Southeastern Regional Services contract.
I make a motion to award the Southeastern Regional Services Group contract for paper to WB Mason Company, Inc., for a one-year period commencing on July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending on June thirty, twenty twenty-five. This award is conditioned upon receiving the appropriate documents specified in the invitation for bid.
Motion?
Second for discussion?
Discussion.
Tracy, question for you. I know you probably have it somewhere, and, and probably not on you, but how much has this increased, um, like, year over year?
Hey, the sheet is in there, I don't have the numbers, but it didn't look like it went up much at all, um, because I think we were paying like thirty-eight dollars, thirty-eight and change a case, and I think it came in at like thirty-eight dollars and maybe went up a few cents.
I just didn't know if it was like huge differences, and if we're seeing those reflected in.
No, um, it's, it's stayed in the thirties since we started with Surgis.
Yep.
So it's, um, it's under control.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?[1784.57] Okay, you and I, roll, please.
Fabie and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candy, I.
They, I.
All right. Uh, where are we? Earth removal. In front of us, possible vote to renew the earth removal permit for T.L. Edwards at 435 Bedford Street. There's a request, application in your packet to renew their earth removal permit for 435 Bedford Street. They're requesting to remove 3,500 cubic yards of material for the permit year of April 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2025. And that permit is here for review and comment.
There's only three select board members.
I think that's the policy, their available policy for reference. Madam Chair, my, my issue with this, which is not going to be a surprise to most of you, is that we were collecting in arrears and not collecting as our application actually says we should?
Mm-hmm.
Which is to give us the payment upfront. I understand that that might mean that they don't collect as many as they thought they would, they might be coming looking for a rebate, but I'd rather we get our money instead of them disappearing and then us having to chase them for money later on. And I don't know if we've got the trucking receipts or some other proof of the 3221 for last calendar year or not, I know that's been a challenge in years past. I think we've got some work to do here.
So Brenner, I know this is probably a little foreign to you. So the select board is the authority that votes the permits for earth removal. And so this is an application that would need to come in front of the board every, you know, annually, every year, if this is something that they plan on doing. So T.L. Edwards has come in front of this board every, or the application has come in front of us every year. So in looking at this application, they're saying that they are looking to take at least two acres of, what is it?
From the two acres.
From two acres, which would be a $200 per acre fee, so that would be $400 for that piece. There's also a cubic yard percentage of 15 cents per cubic yard. So their intention is to remove 3,500 cubic yards, so multiply that by 15, and we come up with the amount?
Different number.
There's a whole earth removal bylaw.
Yeah.
925.
Okay, so that's $925. Now, the next paragraph here says, "I certify that 3,221 cubic yards have been removed during the permit year that began April 1st, 2023." So that's April 1st, 2023, through March 31st, no, wait, it is, through March 31st, 2024. Okay? So in that, it's saying that that's what was removed. They have to include the proof of the cubic yard removal, which they haven't done. We do not have a summary from the trucking company that does that. And they were supposed to have paid that last year, but they're paying it.
This year?
Yeah. So that $3,500, I mean, that 3,500 cubic yard of material for this year is not included in that 88315. So they would come back with their application next year, and that's the point that Brian's trying to make.
Is there a reason why they're doing it this way?
I don't know. My understanding is that they have stockpiled some material, they remove some each year, and there's questions around whether they actually need the permit or not, but, I mean, if it says, you know, 15 cents per cubic yard and is payable upon issuance of this permit, then that should be $925, anything other is a variance of what the application says.
So on page one, am I in the same place here? It says, page one, number two, says, licensee may remove up to 3,100 cubic yards, two acre portion, blah, 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 during the current permit year. Removal fee, 15 cents per cubic yard, shall be paid to the town of Lakeville by the licensee for the removal of any materials during the permit year.
So they can remove up to 3,100, and then they pay what they remove at the end of the year?
It says during. Does that cover it?
Well, I think it gets, I mean, my understanding is that when they provide proof of cubic yards removed, that would be?
Right, because let's say they wanted the 3,500 this year, and then they go and remove stuff, and it turns out that, oh, shoot, we actually did 3,600, 3,700, they give us the trucking records, you say, okay, you got a shortage of 100, 200 yards, whatever it might be, but those same records could be used to say, I didn't take as much as I was going to, so give me my $20 back. The way we're doing it here is, we're just saying, go ahead and do what you want to do, hopefully you want to renew next year, and we can settle up.
Pretty much.
Well, would it be better to have thresholds? Like tiered?
Well, that's, that whole, I've heard that that whole bylaw needs another looking at.
The earth removal bylaw in general?
Yeah, it's, we amended it, but I think sometimes the amended version was a little more complicated than.
Like, I don't think that 15 cents has changed in decades.
I mean, they're based out of Avon, but I imagine they're local?
Mm-hmm.
So should we table this and have them come in and ask them about it?
Well, I think we'd have to change the policy before we would ask them?
Right.
Think about it, to make, to firm the policy up.
I think it's just a matter of, does the board want to enforce what we have, or change it?
So?
The language in number two, I've been doing this for a long time. And it's always been, they pay, when they do their renewal, they pay for the, whatever they took out for the pre, you know, from April 1st, so say, it would be, he would pay from what he took out from April 1st, 2023, to March 31st, 2024. And he's been a licensee as long as I've been here. He's had this license forever. He's, from what I've been told, he doesn't mine anymore, he's just taking out of stockpiles. He's already mined. And there may even be with Mr. Edwards, a situation where he's already paid for all this stuff, that he, that he mined, and then he just left it on, on site. So I think that may have happened before I got here, that he had, you know, say, he removed 15,000 cubic yards from his property, but he just left it there, and he paid for it, and now he's repaying every year for stuff he already paid for way back when, when he started. So, but this is how we've done it with all earth removals, is that the period starts at April 1st, and when they come in, they pay for what they took the year before, because they don't know exactly down to the cubic yard what they're going to take. They're estimating, but like, last year, he went over like, I don't know, like 73 cubic yards or something. So that's why he's paying for it, because he went over, so he's paying for the exact amount that he took out, not his estimate. You know, to get a refund, I would have to write a letter to accounting and submit it to accounting, and then accounting would have to process it, and then a check would have to be issued, and so it, it is a little, it does involve two, possibly three departments to issue, say, like a $20 check. But this is how it's always been done. And number two, in the permit, does state the process. They pay for their previous permit year, and then they, but they pay for their admin fee for the current permit year.
Where are we reading that text? I see number two in the license that was issued, but?
Yeah.
Is there something else I should be looking at?
No.
Because that doesn't read that way to me.
A removal fee of 15 cents per cubic yard shall be paid to the town of Lakeville by the licensee for the removal of any materials during the permit year.
Right.
April 1st, 2023, to March 31st, 2024, was his permit year.
Which you're doing up wrong.
An administrative fee of $400, based on $200 per acre, shall be also, shall also be paid to the town for the current permit year. April 1st, 2024 is the start of the current permit year. They pay for what they removed the previous current, the previous year, they pay the admin fee for the current year.
Good.
I don't read that language the same way whatsoever.
So, I mean, Brian, you're right, it doesn't, I'm sorry, through your, Madam Chair, it, it really needs to be spelled out.
Yeah.
That's what's taking place, but, you know, like, it's not spelled out. So I, so for me, you know, I wanted to hear what the rest of the board feels, because I think that this obviously needs to be addressed. But this has been a longstanding person that's been here, so, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to approve this for this year, but?
Policy.
Policy.
Okay. I make a motion to renew the earth removal, earth removal permit for T.L. Edwards for the property located at 435 Bedford Street, for the removal of up to 300, 3,500 cubic yards. The permit will expire on March 31st, 2025.
So second with discussion. Madam Chair, I added it to my policy list. I also added Maureen's comment on the school transportation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the way that this is going to roll out, if this is supported, so we received a check for $883.15, and again, that covers the $200 per acre administrative fee for $400. It's also addressing the 3,221 cubic yards that were removed in the, in the previous permit year.
Do we have that certification? Do we have that certification?
But that's where I was going.
Sorry.
But we do not have the certification for, for that.
I can ask him why.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Why do we have to, Madam Chair, why do we have to ask for it when it's part of the process?
Right, and we shouldn't. So that's what I'm saying, we shouldn't be.
So something occurs to me that I've heard in the past. Because we don't have anyone on staff who can do the engineering, we almost have to, like, maybe there's something like that, take their word for it or something, I don't know how much.
We, our, our, our last two previous highway superintendents were civil engineers. So they would go out and do an inspection, and then they would report back to the, to the board as to, you know, yes, we feel these numbers are correct. When projects end up, say, like, a subdivision project, when they're done, they would provide an as-built back to the board. Where he's not actively digging, there is no as-built to report back, because he's not changing the structure. He's taking out stockpiles. So it's kind of almost like the Butler, which had stockpile permit, and there was discussion years ago about changing this to a stockpile permit, because there was no active digging and changing of the landscape. So that's why we don't have, like, as-bills, because it's not done and it's not being dug. So as far as the, the slips, yeah, we could get it, and I literally just got this, so I really didn't have time to, like, say, hey, by the way, and?
It's dated May 3rd.
In 24 years, he's never submitted them.
Not to be, like, esoteric, but, like, if something, a pile is there for 20-plus years, isn't it actually de facto the landscape, the topography at that point?
It'd be short of an as-built, which I agree is probably the most accurate way to get the number. Any of us who've bought anything that's built by weight, you pull your truck on empty, you pull your truck on full, or the reverse, and you get your slip. This is not something we're asking, that, like, they have to invent the wheel to do, and it's on the form. And I've brought this up since 2019 or 2020.
So I, with you, Brian. I always read the same thing, too, but when I went in, I was, yeah, understanding the process on this, that we're not in, innocent without policy, so. Okay, any further discussion? So there's a vote to allow this to happen right now, but we're going to make sure that this is buttoned down before we have any other earth removal requests.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do you want to ask Member Donahue to add contingent upon proof of weight from Mr. Edwards, that's up to?
I don't want to, just because it's been so long, and this is a small-town thing. Like, it's great that it's coming to our attention from someone who has done it decently for so long, and we can work it in, but I don't think it's something that we really need to hammer him about this time around.
I do agree that the policy needs to be. And I think that change came to us through town council, actually, and it was still quite confusing, so.
I will amend it if you'd like.
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Fabie and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candy, I.
They, no.
Motion carries. Tracy, would you please make sure that that last page is updated to reflect the fire member board, Commissioner?
Yes, I have it already here.
Oh, excellent.
I just didn't give it to you, because I wasn't sure how it would go.
Okay, thank you. There's a request from the town clerk to send the election workers letters to the state political committees. This is something that we do every year. Attached is a request from the town clerk to send the state political committee's annual letter regarding election workers. So there is one.
Make a motion.
Okay, please go.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Fabie and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candy, I.
They, I.
Maureen. For a second?
Some things just are, you know, easy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next thing in front of us, Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District Commissioner member. This is something that we vote every single year with the board, and I'm currently the representative of the select board on the commission, and so my, you know, term expires the end of May. So if there's anybody else that is interested, I would love to continue to be the commissioner.
I make a motion, we appoint Chair Carbone to continue?
Second.
May 31st through June 20, June 1st, 2025.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I would be very happy to maintain the position as the sheriff representative.
I have a quick question, if I may.
Yes.
Did they ever get back to you on the MBTA thing? I'm an official from the state, yea, nay, MBTA communities?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah. That's a note that I should probably look at and shift, too. Because you asked us to do that.
Didn't know if they'd heard back yet.
I think I reached out, but.
You sure you want to do it? You have a busy, you have a poll.
Oh, yeah, I have a, but it's.
I may know that one's easy for you.
Last Wednesday, last Wednesday of every month, 6:30.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And they're good juvies over there, so. But I never would want to take that away from somebody else that was interested in doing it either, so I will always be a member of the circuit community. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, signify by roll.
Fabie and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candy, I.
They, I.
All right, next in front of us is always very painful when we receive a letter of resignation. So we've received a letter of resignation, and it is up to us to discuss a possible vote. Amy Knox has resigned from Open Space Committee and Community Preservation Committee. So there's a letter here, I'd like to read it for the record, Dear Lakeville Select Board, I am writing to formally resign from my position as chairman of the Open Space Board Committee and as a representative of the open space on the Community Preservation Committee, effective June 7th, 2024. After careful consideration, I have come to the decision that is in best interest of both myself and the community, that I step down from my role on the board. I have greatly valued the opportunity to serve Lakeville and its residents, and I am proud of the contributions I have been able to make during my tenure. I want to express my gratitude to my fellow board members for their support and collaboration, for their dedication and hard work. It has been an honor to work alongside such talented individuals, and I am thankful for the relationships I have formed during my time on the board. Thank you again, thank you once again for the opportunity to serve Lakeville. I wish the board continued success in all its endeavors sincerely, Amy Knox. So I will entertain a motion to accept.
I will reluctantly make the motion?
Mm-hmm.
To accept the letter of resignation from Amy Knox, resigning from the Open Space Committee and Community Preservation Committee, effective June 7th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
No, I just want to thank Amy for, I mean, she came in and she went gangbusters, you know, she, like, was, uh, Open Space, had a big turnover, she became the chair, she did a lot of work in a short amount of time. She did a lot of work in a short amount of time. She really did.
I mean, I would disagree with Amy saying that it's better for the community to have her leave. She's just a bright, wonderful person, wants to get things done. She's always pushing for open space to get things done, like the priority preservation and development parcels, so it's, I feel like there's probably more here, I'd like to understand why she wants to leave, but it's too bad.
Come back anytime, Amy. Great person, very easy to work with, always had lots of helpful suggestions. I had the pleasure of her being my next-door neighbor for years as well. She's a wonderful, just.
She is.
Part of the community, and I wish her well.
And I know, Tracy, you'll be submitting a letter to her to say thank you.
Appreciate it.
Roll, please, by vote, by roll.
Fabian.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candy, aye.
Aye.
Schedule of the Select Board for July, August, September. We have dates in front of us, is this something that we wanna do now or wait until June third? Can you pull up your calendars?
So June third is our next meeting.
That is correct.
June tenth is town meeting.
Yep. And then we have one June.
July eighth is usually where we do our cleanup meetings for finance issues.
This can't be right, I have the seventeenth and twenty-fourth for June also listed. We're going four weeks in a row?
Thank you.
That's a miserable June.
No, I have, in June, I have the third.
Yeah.
And the tenth.
The tenth.
Yeah.
And the twenty-fourth.
Not the seventeenth.
Not the seventeen.
Okay, deleting that one with pleasure. So I guess that would be two weeks.
And so two weeks from there would be this, um, July. That would be July. And the twenty-second.
I mean, I'm happy to go through July, at least. I don't know if anyone has their vacation plans for summer yet.
Nope.
I haven't planned yet.
You guys get vacation?
So I'm just gonna go through July, we'll come back in July, we'll figure out the rest of it. So the eighth and the twenty-second.
I may be remote on the twenty-fourth. Maybe.
Oh, June twenty-fourth?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All right, so please put on this revisit in July, Tracy, you'll remember. Okay, Building Committee update, senior center food pantry.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Building Commissioner, the Facilities Manager, COA Director, and I met a week or so ago. We do have a design of the food pantry, and we did submit the project into the Plymouth County Opera Portal. And so hopefully the project will move forward.
Excellent.
Quick question, Madam Chair, does Plymouth County have any kind of SLA for answering those? Or is it just we're at the whim of the schedule?
I'm sorry?
Like, like, once you've entered that into their portal, do they say, look, get back to us within thirty days, sixty days? Two hours?
Yeah, I'm not sure, because of what the turnaround time is.
All right, thanks.
Okay, in front of you, the Fire Station Building Committee met last week. During that meeting, we went through, which is what was very much anticipated, was the, the cost out of the project. So in front of you this evening is the draft, please highlighted draft, project development schematic design budget update, and this was as of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. So our OPM went through all of these because we had an engineer cost these out based on what current figures were for the build-out. So under the construction costs, you'll have the hard costs listed. And the hard, and then there's a contingency built in and, and, I don't know, how many of you actually watched the Fire Station Building Committee meeting?
I watched it until seven o'clock when the zoning board started.
Yeah, there was a little clash of meanings that, that night, but. So anyways, they, the owner, OPM, explained these very eloquently, that I don't know that I can give it as much justification. But this is information that I wanted the Select Board to receive because we have town meeting coming up on June tenth. So the Fire Station Building Committee wanted to make sure that we had these numbers so that when we went to town meeting, we would be able to show town meeting what the project would cost when coming back in the fall for which would be the debt exclusion. But June tenth, we would be asking the taxpayers for six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the design development piece of the project. As we have been discussing through the budget cycle, that money would come out of our capitalization stabilization account. So that wouldn't be an effect to the taxpayers' taxes right, you know, ongoing right now because that money's already been allocated to the capitalization account. So outside of this highlighted graph, there is a timeline that I'd like to at least have go over with the Select Board because this is one that I think is important, that we are working to get our message out on. So broken up by phase one, phase two, and phase three. Phase one was roughly about eight months, and we'll call that, call that the schematic design phase. The OPM was selected, there was geotech and site survey conducted, site selection, schematic design, and a schematic design estimate. Total cost already funded, and that was at town meeting, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars was allocated for phase one. Currently, the cost has been two, two hundred thousand, one doll, uh, two, two hundred thousand, one, one hundred and fifty dollars. Now we're going into the annual town meeting on June fifth. This would enter into phase two, which is the design development. That's where the six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars would be coming into play. If allocated, the project would then transition into what we would call phase three. And that would bring us through, excuse me, phase two would bring us through fall town meeting of twenty twenty-four. So there'd be, what did we say, five months here for the design development? So come fall, we would ask the taxpayers for an override, a debt exclusion, for the remaining full project cost. And based on what you see here in front of you with this, this graph showing the hard costs and soft costs, the over, the debt exclusion would be roughly nineteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. And that would be subject to fall town meeting, vote of support, and then a ballot approval. So that would be a twofold process for that. So this is where we are right now.
How much is in the stabilization fund?
Uh, there's a balance right now of about three point five million. So this would take it down to about two point eight?
Yeah.
Also, when you're looking at this, you know, the graph here, probably the spreadsheet instead of graph, the bottom number here is the all-in number. And that, we would just subtract out the six fifty-five and the two twenty from that, and that's how we would arrive at the nineteen five. So this information, I did not want to approve, to put up on the website under the Fire Station Building Committee until this board had a chance to review it.
Madam Chair, I really appreciate this level of detail getting to us at this point. I know it's been a tough road to get to these numbers so far. My question, since I don't do these very often, how comfortable is the architect that, if approved at this coming town meeting, they can get those design documents done in the five months? Because we typically have fall town meeting in November. Are we cutting it real close, or are they pretty comfortable with those five months?
They were pretty comfortable.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They provided schedules.
All right, so hopefully no bump this spring, the next, or special.
Madam Chair, I had a question.
Oh, please, do you want to go first?
I'm just, if, so if this location is selected, there's no water line in here, right?
Correct. And so that is not included.
And I think that's about two hundred thousand dollars.
Roughly, I think, is what the ballpark was.
We do talk about that, there's a contingency, obviously, project contingency.
Is it a contingency where it's a known item that we need? You know, wondering if.
If it's a known item, it should be included.
We can bring that up.
Absolutely.
I know I brought this up before, and I, I saw part of the meeting, and you did address value engineering. And going through that step. I, I know this is our preliminary numbers, and this is with everything all included.
That is correct.
But there is another step, and that's usually value engineering, and it's where they can kind of see, you know, where they can not reduce scope, but maybe reduce costs in some places.
And as our OPM and our architect responded to that question, that since day one, we've been looking at that. So when we selected our OPM, we wanted to make sure that we had somebody that had experience to be able to support the needs of Lakeville and represent Lakeville in the best, best way. And we'll continue to do that through the design development process, absolutely. And so they weren't, they looked at me like I had three heads when they asked the question, so they were very familiar with, you know, that question response, so.
And that would be within what time period, just the design, design development period that they would be coming up with?
From now till the end of the project.
Value engineering?
Yep.
Savings? Okay, and then my second question is, last time you presented here to this group, you had talked about some PR and putting it out there.
Thank you, because you just made me think of something that I forgot to write on my, my list. And my Fire Station Building Committee, I think they would probably beat me up as I walk out the door today. We have scheduled an open house informational session at the fire station on Saturday, June first, from ten AM to one PM. So residents are encouraged to stop by the fire station. This is not, you know, a presentation, but it is, you know, an open house. So if you haven't seen the current facility, this is a great chance for you to do so. You'll be able to see the design, proposed schematic design for the new fire station. And you'll be able to ask your questions. The, there'll be representation from our operations, our owner's project manager, which is our OPM. And I believe the architect will be there, the Fire Station Building Committee will be there. So if you have questions or concerns, you know, it would be probably a really, a really good place to stop by and have a conversation. That information is gonna be going up on the website, through social media, and we're gonna promote that day. But it was very important to me that I get to the Select Board before we completely send the draft. And to the committee, not just me, I'm, there's no I in team, so.
Quick question, I know we've touched on it in the past very lightly, but is there, at some point in this schedule, how would we identify if anything in this project would fall under the municipal vulnerability program for any cost savings to us?
I think that that's an excellent question. I think that at any point in time, we would have to just bring that into, into play.
I know.
It's a great question.
I think it was, I'm trying to find an old email here, I think it was Williamsburg, perhaps, that they got part of their station funded because they were moving out of, they were moving it out of a valley that was constantly flooded. So there was scenarios where they were like, yep.
It's absolutely something, and I know that the governor, you know, there's a lot of money that was in the MVP program for awards and I'm assuming that was still funded, well, the share. I, my apologies, I haven't looked to see how that was funded, but my understanding is that there's significant money in the.
They're forcing a lot of housing on us, they should chip into this. We can take care of them.
Also, it appears, Madam Chair, if I'm reading the, the numbers correctly or I'm not, there's a roughly two million in contingencies that if things go well, maybe we don't even need.
That is correct.
So.
That's absolutely correct.
Let's hope.
And these.
It's never happened in the history of the world, but this could be the one.
Who's not member Debbie Downer?
The same project manager did bring us in a little under budget with the police to station, so.
It's promising.
Yeah.
And it allowed us an opportunity for communication improvement.
Yep, we were able to tie in all the new communication stuff that, you know, so. I'm hopeful.
And then, you know, my, my last thought, I just wanna make sure the residents know exactly the costs and that we have a good handle on where the residents are going to support or not support. Because I think that's important for every step of the journey and anything you can do communication-wise in addition to that open house.
Yep.
Or, you know, sending out a good Google survey, or, you know, just anything to homeowners or any type of thing to gauge community receptiveness. Because in order to fully embrace what's going forward, I wanna make sure everyone really understands the costs that we're talking about.
I couldn't agree with you more.
If I could tally on to that, I think the question we'll get is, okay, so here's kind of going through construction, when does this hit my tax bill? Right, like, that's the thing that is always like, all right, when does that, that exclusion actually hit? The coffers, and I need to be looking for it.
And that those conversations are gonna be had this week? We needed to get this first, and now we're working to get those conversations. So Mr. Nunes and I will be meeting with the assessors and the tax collector, you know, tax office to go and, or accountant to go over this impact. Because that is a question that people are gonna ask, and we need to be able to answer it.
So another question, Madam Chair, that people are gonna ask is, what does this operating budget look like every year for this new building? Because right now, operating budgets are tied into the historic, not the historic, the town. It's all historic. Um, the town hall, and, and separating out that budget and understanding, you know, how much it's going to cost in addition for operating is gonna be an important part for us moving forward as well.
Agreed.
Even that, just to speak on it, I mean, we accounted for a little bit of it in the budget, but it really wasn't like, you know, it was more electricity, cleaning, you know, whatever, but it really wasn't like, what was that?
Staffing, wasn't really, it wasn't staffing.
Yeah, it didn't affect staffing really, so it was, you know.
We had some things like service contracts for generators and stuff like that, and utilities.
But there will be, since we have no plan for the existing building, what to do with it. You know, potentially a few acres of new properties, so now DPW is gonna be expected to maintain the outside. That's not done for free labor-wise, right, so that's hours in a day, in a week. So these things do have a way of trickling in, you're like, oh, damn, think of that.
I looked at a few like-sized communities about putting in a new fire station to that size, obviously, it's all different. And it, it was about three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in operating charges, which was an increase over, you know, wherever they had shared it from. And these are remote communities, though, so I don't know how, like, accurate it is, but, I mean, that would be like that baseline where we just spitballing where it could be. Yeah.
An, an increase of three hundred and fifty? Oh, God, no.
Well, that's something we'll, we'll have to tackle that, so.
That would remain to be seen, but I don't think it would be, no.
It has to be answered, so.
No, right, right, but.
We can buy Mike a riding lawnmower. He'd be happy.
We'd paint it red.
We could put lights on it.
Put a ladder on the back.
Make it a real one, and that's now their gym, that's how they get to exercise.
Sorry, Mike.
Okay, Old Colony Regional Voltech Building Committee?
Old Colony, I do not have the numbers break down at this point. So I may say. Um, so on May seventh, the, uh, MSBA and the members from the building committee that were part of the designer selection process, I think it's called, did pick a, an architect. It is HMFH. Um, if you're familiar with either the VP project that's going on or the recent project at Bristol Aggie, they performed both of those. They've got a bunch of other ones in play right now. So they introduced themselves at our meeting. So May seventh, the morning was when the selection happened. And then that evening, they dragged them down to Rochester and we had a building committee meeting. So they were all very tired by the time we got to talk to them. But, um, team was very pleasant to talk to. They had a great presentation, which I'll send out. It was a condensed version of the longer one they gave earlier in the day, but they kind of prided themselves on coming in on time, under budget, and, um, essentially spending less per square foot than other firms do for similar facilities. So they thought the location was great, there was a lot of different options that could be looked at. Their big first thing is now figuring out what's right. They said that projects they've done in the past, they've done combinations of renovation and addition. They've done full build, they've done a bit of everything. So they'll analyze all of those and come back with recommendations on what to do. Whether it's full build or renovate or addition or wherever it might be. And that's going to take, um, I think through September of this year is when that'll wrap up. So at that point, then we'll have a better idea of the, the high-level scope of the project itself. But if the timelines hold, um, whatever the project is, if anything, we'd be looking at likely towns being asked for funded, fall-ish town meeting of calendar year twenty-five. So basically, one year after potentially being asked to fire. And, um, it's five member towns that would have to be included there. And they're not sure yet if they'll use the, they have two options. One, there can be five individual votes taken or they can have one Uber vote that happens on the same day at the same time in all towns. And it's just the majority of the votes, it's not like, Lakeville approves and Rochester approves. It's just this many people voted and that's what happened. And I think that's what happened to.
Bristol Plymouth?
Yeah.
That's the direction that they all vote, all the regional schools, that's what they do.
Okay.
One vote, one day.
I don't.
Uniform polling hours.
Does the school committee have that choice, you know?
Yes, it's the, it's the school committee.
Yeah, so they've got somebody on board, um, I'll pass out the information they shared. And, um, Old Colony is updating their project webpage as well as things move along.
I'd like to say thank you, um, to the superintendent Erin, um, and our school committee representatives, uh, Robert Marshall and Don Foster. Um, Leah Brenner and I, um, met them last week at the school.
Nice.
Um, so we were able to get a tour that, um, I think we all benefited from. Because I had only been into the school so far. And then, um, we had a wonderful lunch.
It was so good, they got pierogies.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I've never had a bad meal there, that's fantastic.
We also got a lot of information to like, you know, what they would, um, like to add, some sort of a biometric shop, which, I mean, we all know that we need those kinds of folks, you know? Um, but also the plumbing and HVAC, which, you know, we all know we need. So there's, um, superintendent, I, I think he gets up every day and says, how can I get this done fast?
Yeah.
So.
He's passionate about it.
Yeah, yeah. All right, Leah, what do you got? Um, nothing really, um, moving along. Uh, we should probably have more, um, as we get, probably by our next meeting, we'll have a little bit better idea how many applications came in and some information. But that's kind of where we're at. No business, anybody?
I know it's late and I'm so sorry. Um, I went to the ZBA meeting, I don't know if anybody watched the ZBA meeting. I think all of us should be aware of it and be involved in it, um, because it's a pretty big deal. I'm not going to speak out of turn, but they are attempting to reclassify bodies of water in town so that they can have greater footage or greater space to do their developments.
They being?
They being the developers. There's, there's a perennial stream that they're trying to re, reclassify as an intermittent stream. They didn't report vernal pools for months. Um, I, they don't know if they've, the zoning board isn't aware if they've reported them yet. They didn't measure the vernal pools when the vernal pools were actually full because you're supposed to measure from the edge to the development as opposed to to the center to the development. Um, you can't measure a vernal pool in winter because it's not there. So it's just, I understand that, you know, we, we have housings and development and all this stuff, but, uh, Cora Pierce from the Narragansett Tribe, I believe, was there. Um, so for the natives, it's a very sacred place. But my problem with, is that they're literally trying to reclassify the geography of our town in a specific place in order to build more. And that's, that doesn't seem appropriate to me. That water is all going to go back. That water is going to return to the places that it, that it stays, that it belongs, which could lead to a lot of flooding, a bunch of issues. So I, I trust the ZBA to, to be on top of this. They seemed very receptive to comments, but I know that the residents who were there were very upset. Um, some people suggested fighting it. And I just think, uh, it's better to be aware and on top of it as it develops as opposed to trying to catch up when it eventually comes to light. So just keep an eye on that.
Thank you. I know I have to watch the meeting in its entirety because I only tuned in.
Yeah, you were at the other meeting.
The auditorium was almost full. Uh, it wasn't like packed, packed, but it was town meeting full.
I did have occasion to watch some of it, um, and, and I agree. I think, um, I think the chair and the ZBA did a great job in a very, in a very touchy situation and they laid it out in a really thoughtful way and were very respectful and receptive to anyone's comments and considerations.
One hundred percent.
Yeah, and I think that was, that was the, making the best possible of a very difficult situation. Um, but I do appreciate your opinion on that. I did not see the part about the, the vernal pools. I missed that.
Um, and I made a suggestion, I made some suggestions and stuff, but the way that they're going to structure is the next ZBA meeting, they're going to focus on traffic. So they're going to specify an issue for the subsequent meetings to focus on.
Excellent.
If I may, I've watched some of it, not all of it, because like you said, there was like four or five meetings all happening the same night. Um, from what I saw, it looked pretty good, well-run. Um, you know, chairman did a really good job, like you said, in the situation. I think, I just simply hope residents understand what ZBA is allowed to do and not allowed to do. It's got to be factually based information brought by certain entities because we run a really bad risk of if they say, I'm denying based on, I just don't like, the developer can go to the state and the state can override us and then we get no seat at the table for mediation, for nothing.
That was the biggest point where he kept trying to impress like, we can't just say no because if we say no and they overrule us for hours.
I totally get people who are nervous, what does it do? The school system can't legally say, right? We can't even consider that it could be one kid or a thousand kids. We might agree with that or not, but we can't.
Yeah.
So we just have to help ZBA get the information necessary through the other boards and committees that needs to get through and hope that the right thing is figured out.
All right, so old business, anybody?
Um, real quick, because we are going past however many hours now.
Yeah.
So our goal-setting meeting, I just wanted to say that I, um, started getting tired. I, I, you know, I know I had talked to Lacy a little bit ahead. I thought we were going to do more of a, you know, like to-do list, what I like to call a to-do list. This, you know, but I guess, um, for me, it was kind of more of like a global, which is supposed to be the select board, you know, perspective, how we do, you know? So I did appreciate her efforts, but, um, you know, it's possible, like, we yawned a few times. I wasn't, doesn't mean I wasn't paying attention, but, um, I'm glad we did it. But then, you know, once we do hire a new town administrator, we probably will get to more specific type of goals.
Yes.
So, you know, um, that was, you know, I was a little fatigued by the end, but, yeah.
I hear you too.
Yeah.
So I will keep the, the list of, um, old business, I'll cut it down from twenty items to ten, um, tonight. So, um, we can probably take about thirty minutes. I'm only kidding. All right.
Not funny at this point.
I know. I still have to roll that with that humor, but there is something that I am going to bring back and put on a future agenda, um, so maybe you all could think about it, begin to think about it. Uh, we are very privileged to have Lake Cam, um, available to record our meetings. They are not our go-to, fall-to. Because if we have, um, our meetings are held in public and we are bound by open meeting law, we must record our minutes. Meaning they have to be scribed, they have to be somehow reflected of the, of the meeting. I think that we unfortunately rely on Lake Cam to record our meetings. And then we can go back or whoever might be the recording secretary might watch those meetings. But those meetings may not be recorded by Lake Cam. So I don't want Lake Cam to be the end-all to.
You're talking recorders?
I'm talking recorders or something, just think about it. I'm going to bring it back for discussion. I just want to make sure that we cover our bases.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, um, we used to have a setup where we, we just, if Lake Cam wasn't there, we would have something on a tripod, it would be pointing to us and it would capture everything. So all meetings were always captured. Um, it was sponsored by Lake Cam that was their cameras. And if we didn't, we had the recorder on.
We used to do assessors meetings with just recorders for a while, until.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And so.
We do have digital recorders, some of the groups have them. Um, before we hired the recording secretary, um, some of the groups have them. I've kind of lost track where they are. I think I may have one in my drawer.
So I wouldn't suggest recorders per se. I would suggest we would have, um, some transcription software, um, just and add it on to, like, you know, have an account that someone could use. Unless, Brian, you look sad at the, it's not like ten years ago with Dragon Naturally Speaking when it was, you know, you, all sorts of craziness that.
A lot of my meetings now, I, I rely on the, the AI afterwards to say, give me a wrap-up.
I do too.
And it's scary how good the action items are.
Yeah, they, they do that, but I didn't know legally if we could use that to summarize because I use the AI to summarize my meetings in, um, in our Zoom meetings when I have them.
The challenge is any, anytime any of us rely on something to be there recording, we're going to hope it's there after and then it's right back to the problem. And so you kind of need like a, something in the room and then, okay, if this works, great, but at least we've got.
We got something.
So a recorder.
So think about it, please, um, because I just want to make sure that we have that taken care of. All right, I'm going to entertain a motion, um, to adjourn, it's at nine fifty-four. Issue moved. Okay.
Second.
All right. Roll.
Donkey eye.
Carboni eye.
Ente deu eye.
Uh, stay eye.
Thank you all.